Oh, oh.
Yay.
Why isn't mine coming on? All right. Move to item five. My pick for the Shasta County Commission on Aging. Mr. Michael Brokoff. We finally got somebody who is 55 years old to apply. And it's been, Vanessa didn't have anybody when she was mayor. So it's been a while.
Nobody wanted to do it.
So he is well qualified. I talked to him by phone and then talked to his reference, who I didn't know at the time, was his girlfriend. So she recommended him. So here we go.
Thankful.
Motion to approve.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. Just kidding. Yes.
I am just lost on all this stuff here. All right. Moving on to public hearing for the Housing Community Development.
Look, it says your app, so.
We need to read this thing.
You didn't vote.
Court challenge to action taken by the City Council. Any project or decision may be limited to only those issues raised during the public hearing or in writing written correspondence delivered to the City Council during or prior to the public hearing. Do we have to do that? Okay. After. Okay. Nicole, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of City Council. Item 6.1 this evening is concerned with a 2025 to 2029 consolidated plan. As a requirement for receipt of community development block grant funds as well as home investment partnership funds from the federal government, we are required to submit a five-year strategic plan detailing information that we need regarding our community and our community's needs and where we would like to spend those funds. The typical types of projects funded with home and CDBG are listed on this slide. Affordable housing, housing rehab, homeless prevention, public improvements, economic development, and public service. Here we have a strategic planning process. This slide depicts the public participation and consultation included within our planning process for the consolidated plan. Public input was received via workshops, surveys, public meetings, as well as collaboration with local service providers and stakeholders. For the needs assessment and market analysis, head provides specific data sets to each community, and it also asks for specific questions. It has prescribed information it would like for us to provide within the strategic planning process and in the resulting document. Staff also obtains additional information to complete the goals for the next five years. Included in the con plan is the first year annual action plan. So if you look at this, we have the con plans for five years, and then each year there's an annual action plan that depicts what we plan on spending our CDBG and our home allocations on and what those projects are. And then you have, after that, each year you have a caper. And what a caper is, is you're basically reporting on what your action plan detailed and if you met your goals within your action plan. Some of the outreach and the engagement that we participated in during this planning process included public meetings and community workshops. We had a housing needs workshop, housing needs discussion with NorCal Continuum of Care and Shasta Advisory Board. We had a community development advisory committee, at least two meetings. We also had an online survey that was sent out to the community. We had 362 responses to that survey. We've engaged with 85-plus local agencies and organizations, and of course, I mentioned earlier, we collaborated with the NorCal Continuum of Care. Now, for the first year of the annual action plan, these are estimates on how much funding we believe that we will receive. We have not actually received any kind of notification from the federal government yet with regard to what the allocations will be for the 2025-26 annual plan year. So this is an estimate, and we have approximately for CDBG about 934,000, and for Home Investment Partnership Program, included with program income, about 1.2 million. Now, these are the priority needs funding areas that came out of this planning process. Affordable housing, homeless prevention, emergency services, employment and economic development, as well as public facility and infrastructure improvements. Now, when we talk about affordable housing, the Home Investment Partnership Program really is funding that is utilized to increase affordability housing units in the community.
Item six point one this evening is concerned with a twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-nine consolidated plan. As a requirement for receipt of community development block grant funds as well as home investment partnership funds from the federal government, we are required to submit a five-year strategic plan detailing, um, information that we need regarding our community and our community's needs and where we would like to spend those funds. The typical types of projects funded with Home and CDBG are listed on this slide. Affordable housing, housing rehab, homeless prevention, public improvements, economic development, and public service. Here we have a strategic planning process. This slide depicts the public participation and consultation included within our planning process for the consolidated plan. Public input was received via workshops, surveys, public meetings, as well as collaboration with local service providers and stakeholders. For the needs assessment and market analysis, HUD provides specific data sets to each community. And it also asks for specific questions. It has prescribed information it would like for us to provide within the strategic planning process and in the resulting document. Staff also obtains additional information to complete the goals for the next five years. Included in the con plan is the first year annual action plan. So if you look at this, um, we have the con plans for five years. And then each year, there's an annual action plan that depicts, um, what we plan on spending our CDBG and our home allocations on and what those projects are. And then you have, after that, each year, you have a caper. And what a caper is, is you're basically reporting on what your action plan detailed and if you met your goals within your action plan. Some of the outreach and the engagement, uh, that we participated in during this planning process included public meetings and community workshops. We had a housing needs workshop, housing needs discussion with NorCal Continuum of Care and Shasta Advisory Board. We had a community development advisory committee, uh, at least two meetings. We also had an online survey that was sent out to the community. We had three hundred and sixty-two responses to that survey. We've engaged with eighty-five-plus local agencies and organizations. And of course, um, we, I mentioned earlier, we, um, collaborated with the NorCal Continuum of Care. Now, for the first year of the annual action plan, these are estimates on how much funding we believe that we will receive. We have not actually, uh, received any kind of notification from the federal government yet with regard to what the allocations will be for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six annual plan year. So this is an estimate. And we have approximately for CDBG, uh, about nine hundred and thirty-four thousand and for Home Investment Partnership Program, uh, included with program income, about one point two million. Now, these are the priority needs funding areas that came out of this continue, out of this planning process. Affordable housing, homeless prevention, emergency services, employment and economic development, as well as public facility and infrastructure improvements. Now, when we talk about affordable housing, uh, the Home Investment Partnership Program really is funding that is utilized to increase affordability housing units in the community. We try to expand traditional permanent housing options, um, by developing, developing single-family and multifamily affordable housing units. We try to tie assistance to upcoming affordable housing projects through partnerships in the community as well as any state funds, um, state NOFA's that may be coming out, uh, for participation and application to. We provide home buyer and rehab assistance to low mod income households within the city of Reading, as well as trying to support, uh, special needs and senior housing. And we encourage the, um, development of ADUs, accessory dwelling units, and mixed income communities. As far as public service projects, public service projects are traditionally funded with, um, CDBG funding. And each year HUD allows you to spend up to fifteen percent of your allocation toward public service projects. And here, this year, we went through the process. And typically, we have a NOFA that is published in January. And it's about out for about thirty days, which gives the opportunity for nonprofit agencies to apply to the, for these public service funds. And we went through that process this year. And, uh, the, uh, applications were rated and ranked by the CDAC Committee. And here we have our recommended projects. Faith Works for intensive supports case management for Francis Court families of twenty-five thousand. Child Abuse Prevention Council for their Camp Hope of twenty-two thousand. Youth Violence Prevention Council, uh, for their pure court, twenty-two thousand. Lutheran Social Services for their Good Water Crossing micro shelter site, uh, twenty thousand. And United Way in Northern California for their Mark Street, uh, micro shelter for operations funds of ten thousand. We also, um, received applications for public facility and infrastructure improvements. And here we have these, the types of things that we can fund with this money is ADA accessibility, curb ramps, sidewalk upgrades in low mod income areas of the city. We can strengthen public facility, uh, facilities through upgrades, removal of lead-based paint, uh, and code enforcement activities, as well as, uh, improve facilities and infrastructure in low mod income neighborhoods. And also, we are assisting, uh, South City Park, uh, with, uh, Section one oh eight loan payments. Specifically, we will be, um, allocating eighty-six thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars to ADA, one hundred and forty-one, three sixty-four to code enforcement. And of course, um, approximately a hundred and twenty-two thousand toward the one oh eight loan payment for South City Park. As part of receiving grant funding, we are also able to allocate some funding to administrative costs for Home Investment Partnership Program. We're able to allocate ten percent of our grant award to, um, administration. CDBG is twenty percent. We also have activity delivery, um, funds that we are able to utilize for project delivery of our loan servicing and our rehab programs. And, uh, as far as economic development, we can, uh, fund economic development, which is promoting job creation and self-sufficiency within our community and also to encourage living wage employment and support business activity, um, funding. This year, we had a few applications and we will be funding EDC for fifty thousand dollars to fund job creation in the Reading community. So in closing, staff recommends, uh, opening and closing of the public hearing and, uh, having City Council adopt the resolution approving the submission of the con plan and the annual action plan to HUD, as well as providing authorization to the city manager to sign all necessary documents to submit, uh, the package to HUD. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Nicole. Questions, anybody? Do we? All right, public hearing is now open. By reading this, a court challenge to action taken by the City Council on any project or decision may be limited to only those issues raised during the public hearing or in writing written correspondence delivered to the City Council during prior or for the public hearing. No comments? All right, that was easy. Public hearing is closed. We entertain, uh, any questions, nomination or recommendation?
Motion to approve unless someone has any comment.
Second.
All right, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you, Nicole, very much. All right. All right, we are moving on. Now, number, I think we're gonna put, uh, the rodeo thing to the end after the budget. Well, I was, I was thinking you guys might want to participate. It'd be quite fun. All right, number nine, um, I don't know how to say it, but can I get a? But how do you say it? Yahoo! Oh, yee-haw, sorry. I gotta yee-haw. All right. I totally messed that up, but anyway. All right, Mr. Tippin.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, for, for obvious reasons. I'll make this sort of quick. So we started on this process last spring when Ted Bambino suggested that the council move forward on a new lease amendment. So we had an ad hoc that was created that consisted of, uh, then Mayor Audette and, uh, Councilmember Johnson, who later became Vice Mayor, um, Latah, who became the ad hoc member. But we met with Ted Bambino and Baron Browning of the Reading Rodeo Association for a number of meetings, probably six, seven, eight meetings, and developed a, a, a letter of intent that was approved by the City Council in November. And I think most people recall that. Since that time, we've been working diligently through the actual lease agreement. It needed to be changed in some areas because it's a much longer lease and also just to update it for current standards. Happy to say that we've been able to work through all of that. And I actually have a, uh, attached to the staff report is, uh, the lease agreement. It's signed by the Reading Rodeo Association for your consideration tonight. The key elements of that, um, lease are a twenty-five-year primary lease with two ten-year optional extensions, uh, which provides a long-term security for the Reading Rodeo Association. There's commitments, uh, for that lease. They're still paying fifty bucks a year. But there's certain, uh, commitments of improvements to the facility, to the tune of about twelve million plus dollars. That's just rough estimates for now. And it, it's the announcers booth, private boxes, grandstands, all within performance milestones in terms of years and, uh, in terms of when they have to be complete or when the sixty percent drawings have to be submitted to the city for approval. So there's metrics along the way so we can make sure that we're all, uh, making great use of the, of the facility and that it's being used to a maximum extent. The, obviously, they're gonna host the Reading Rodeo Association, but they're also gonna be working to expand those community event programming at the rodeo grounds. We all recognize that there's some conflicts at times that exist in terms of that small area down there and the limited parking. So there'll be a quarterly meeting requirement where all of the, uh, uh, vendors down there are meet, uh, along with the city. And we discuss things like parking, event coordination, and that sort of thing. In particular, we're gonna develop a parking plan that can be, uh, initiated. If there's potential conflict between events, we can initiate a parking, uh, plan, which may be using parking other locations of the city and maybe by use of RAB or other charter systems to get people in and out of the facility. And so that, I think, will be a key point of, of trying to keep as much activity down there as possible. I know they've already been working with our community services department to see what we can do to engage, uh, children during the summer programs to get them introduced to the rodeo way of life. There's other updates that are required for SEQA or for prevailing wage issues. Um, and there's been an increase in the requirement insurance based on current standards in the, in the state of the conditions of California and jury awards. So we've updated that and everybody's, uh, been, uh, gracious to recognize that that's an important element. You know, I think what, uh, we also have done is recognize that, uh, we're gonna have a specific plan that's gonna be considered by the council, um, in two weeks, which will be sort of a scoping overview of the plan. And that'll continue working towards completion, hopefully, at the end of this year or early next. And within that, there's, uh, futures that we don't know, but that have been imagined. So we've, uh, recognized that and we've developed a clause within the lease agreement that if in, uh, some point in the future, it's decided we need to do something different than what we have down there, then the Reading Rodeo Association will make completely whole for any investments they've done. And so we've, we've reached agreement on language that would allow that to happen in a very systematic way and, uh, in accordance with everybody's agreement. So with that, um, I will close my comments and I'm available for any questions as I assure Ted.
I'd like to see Mr. Bambino, uh, come on up, say a few words.
Thank you, City Council. We got forty-five years. I get more than three minutes?
Yes.
All right.
You got three and a half.
So, uh, City Council, City Staff, thank you for the, uh, the time this evening. I have some thank yous to do, um, along the way. And as Barry indicated, uh, the ad hoc committee, uh, was not really something we wanted to do. And, uh, we, we bought into it. And after we did that eight weeks, I think it was, uh, it was the best thing we did. It was, uh, enlightening. It developed a partnership that we can go forward with for, for many years. We're, we're gonna be gone. Our juniors are currently, right now, practicing for their parades coming up. But this is gonna benefit them immensely going down the road. So they don't have to worry about these leases and, and they can just, uh, stick to business. I'd like to thank the City Council and, uh, the ad hoc committee in which was developed through this whole process. I know you guys were, uh, not all on the council at the time, but your, your support was felt and seen, and we, we appreciate it very much. Also, the city staff and, uh, Christian and his staff, um, we were on ya all the time. Your load was heavy and, uh, we were anxious. And I appreciate your hard work and time, uh, working with, uh, with our council, uh, to get us through this. I especially wanted to thank Mr. Barry Tippin and, uh, his professionalism. His, uh, determination to get this, uh, through for the betterment of this community was enlightening. He volunteered his time to come to our clubhouse and meet with our board and answer questions, which was, uh, a very, uh, very good thing for us to see and really gives us the feeling of partnership going forward than just a leaseholder. And I think that's imperative for us to be successful going down the road. The Riverfront, uh, specific plan community and everybody that's involved with it. We were involved with that, uh, along the way. And, uh, again, we were hesitant, uh, not knowing what we're looking at. We met with them numerous times. They've asked our opinions. We've, we've given our opinions. The community's spoken, and I think as that goes forward, uh, we're anxious to be a part of what that looks like. Here we go. All right. To my Reading Rodeo Association members. I really want to thank you guys for the ongoing commitment, uh, and the trust that you put in Baron and I. There was a lot of unanswered questions along the way. A lot of questions that we didn't have the answers to because this wasn't something that, you knew something one day and the next day it was different. We, we had to develop this thing and we hope that now you understand why we couldn't come and just kind of hypothetically give some answers. And I appreciate, uh, everything that everybody did for the trust you put in, uh, for this and the patience that you had. And we're, we're confident that going forward as a, as a unit, we can make this happen, uh, for this community. So I thank you for that. Asphalt Cowboys, uh, you guys have been there, uh, every one of these meetings from three years back. You've always been here and always been supportive of us. And, uh, we cannot go forward without the partnership of Reading Rodeo and the Asphalt Cowboys. It is imperative that we unify to make this the best that we can possibly be. And we are well on our way to doing that. And your appearance here tonight is much appreciated, and I thank you for that. Last but not least, our community. We have got a fabulous community and they have supported us every step of the way. From way back, like I said, three and a half years ago, we, we didn't call for them. They came to defend us. They came because they want this rodeo grounds there. They're in a specific plan. They indicated they want to see improvements. So do we. And we're gonna do that. And we're gonna be committed to this community to give back to what they've given us over these past years. We've got a great rodeo coming up and you'll see them out in groves, and we're really excited about that. I could go on for hours, uh, about the people that have really helped us along the way. A couple of quick shout-outs. I'd like to thank Dan Muir, who was our counsel through this process. Dan worked with Christian and, uh, they did the, the legal aspect of this. And he looked out for the best interests of the Reading Rodeo Association and did a fabulous job. We didn't have any major hiccups. They probably had conversations we didn't know about, but that's what they get paid for, right? Also, early on in this thing, I want to thank Tyler Wicklow, who was instrumental in getting us down the path last fall when we were not knowing the direction and how to go. And he really helped us along the way, and we appreciate that as well. So concluding, I would just like to, again, thank the council for your support. You guys look pretty good up there, I'd have to admit. It's, it's really, um, enlightening to see the support of this community, the support of the city. And I look forward, as, as our team does, for a long relationship, partnership, because that's what we're, that's what we're geared to do. So I thank you very much, and if we could get a photo with, uh, with the council, that would be awesome. Thank you.
We shall. Let's, let's take a vote first.
We should vote first. We should just vote first so I can make sure he wants a picture with all of us.
Yeah, yeah. What? Oh, we have two more speakers. Sorry about that. All right, Ted spoke. All right, Steve? And then Josh?
Thank you. I'd be lost without you guys. Good evening, uh, staff, community members, rodeo association, asphalt cowboys. This is a historic day. This is huge. This is a time when the whole community, with their concern and local government and different groups, have come together and created something that's gonna be there for decades. And it is gonna create a wonderful thing for everybody involved. Income for the city, uh, entertainment for the people, and, well, what you guys do. You know, the rodeo association. And on top of that, um, it's the first time I've ever seen City Manager Tippin almost speechless. So it's also a first. And I did want to, I wanted to thank Barry Tippin, uh, particularly because I think he was instrumental in this, and all the city staff. And, and you guys, how hard you worked. And I just want to say, this is a historic moment. It's fantastic.
Mr. Johnson?
Hello, council. Thank you so much. Um, just wanted to say a few quick words. Being on the ad hoc committee last year was probably one of the, my highlights. If people ask me, you know, some of my favorite moments, being on council for just a short time was, was actually being the, uh, being able to be in this room with Baron and Ted, uh, Bambino and, and working through this together and seeing the partnership form, uh, just across the table. It was truly professional. It was incredible to see Barry at work. He is, uh, he is artful in, in how to, to navigate these types of things. And, uh, it was, it was great to be on there with, uh, then Mayor, uh, Tinesse Audette as well. But I think that, you know, all of this, i- it always comes down to that sometimes you just don't know why you're in a place at the right time. And I think there were so many things I look back, I said, there was a reason for that. And, uh, being able to build a relationship with, uh, Mr. Bambino. I already, uh, had a relationship with, uh, with Baron, but Mr. Bambino was, uh, was absolutely incredible. It has formed a, a great friendship that I appreciate now and. It has formed a, a great friendship that I appreciate now and, and it also, you know, started some new things too. And so I will, I will say this, you know, not only are we going to have an incredible rodeo down there for 45 years, maybe longer, and eventually incredible facilities for this community for years to come. Hopefully my grandchildren will enjoy it long after I'm gone and, but, you know, starting new things too. You know, you know, this year because of this friendship, we're now going to do something called Rodeo Church on the Sunday night after rodeo. And so, you know, for people that maybe give up on religion and maybe not God, it'd be a great event for them, see a wild horse broken and it's going to be a, a pretty cool thing. And so I'm just grateful for it. So thank you so much. Thanks for the opportunity. Thank you for the friendship. Let's go, rodeo.
Thank you, Josh.
Go for it.
Motion to approve the lease.
A favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Let him see us.
Picture time.
I do want to say just one thing that the city is giving you not just a place in the center of city, but it's giving you a place in the heart of our city. And I'm sure, I'm confident that you will make us proud of that. Thank you.
Picture, picture time.
Good thing you brought us matching.
All right. We're moving on. Finally, who's doing all the, shall we wait a minute? Sarge, thank you. Oh, I don't care. Whatever you want to do. Mr. Robinett or is it Mr. Tippin?
Well, I'll do a very brief startup. So obviously this is item nine, 10A, which is a draft budget for the general fund and the internal service funds. As the council knows, when we adopted the current budget, we adopted it with a structural deficit. So we knew that that was the case, but we also knew that the economy was in turmoil. We weren't sure if it was going to return, whether it was going to stay flat. Unfortunately, it actually got worse. And so when we adopted that budget, we immediately started seeing more downturns in, in revenues. And then we also had expenses, some unplanned, some planned. The planned expenses were things like union contracts that were being negotiated to make sure that we had market wages and we could hire good staff, retain good staff, but obviously that costs money. And so over the, the first year or so of the current budget, as things continued to get more dark in terms of the budget, we had to start making adjustments, which began in earnest really in May of '24 and then continued from there. So as the council is well aware during our recent budget workshops, we've been talking about additional cuts and additional saving opportunities and additional revenue opportunities with service charges increases and that sort of thing. So all that to say that I'm pretty proud at working with all of the department directors and, you know, particularly with the gentleman on my left. We were able to develop a budget that is balanced, not only balanced, that we have some surpluses in each of the years, which is really important for two reasons. One is as we've held down some, recommended held down on some operating expenses, we know some things are going to come up that we probably will have to deal with. And so having some cushion there is important. And then in addition, as you all know, we still have some grant money that is funding some of our public safety positions that as we move past this current budget year, we're going to need to find capacity within that budget to absorb those positions and make sure they're keeping, working for the community. And so Greg, tonight will give you an overview of the budget as it's being presented. Keep it in mind, of course, that this is really just a preliminary draft, general fund and internal service funds. The full budget will be presented to you in June for your final consideration for adoption. So tonight is not the final, final, but it's pretty close as far as the general fund and internal service funds goes. And, you know, we'll be able to answer any questions at the end, but hopefully it's a, it's a budget you're satisfied with and we can move forward into the next fiscal year. With that, I'll hand it over to Greg.
So some of my comments are probably going to sound like a broken record. You know, we've yet again implemented a new system to do something. This is with our budget module. I'll look at the directors because I'm sure some of them are still learning. They're not in it as much as my staff. So I want to give a huge shout out to my staff. I always do that. Those of you who have ever worked closely with them, I think you know how hard they work, how much they care and how professional they are. I really appreciate everybody on that entire team. I will especially call out Bailey and Tammy. They've been doing a lot of heavy lifting, helping me get us to this point to present this budget. Obviously, this isn't the final budget. It's just the preliminary budget. We still have, the final budget won't come to council. Final proposed budget won't come to council until the second meeting in June, June 17th. But this is a culmination of a lot of efforts to get here and if council likes what we've presented, we will work in earnest to get the document ready either way. And so more work to come, but this is a big milestone and so I just want to thank those people. I also, as I look down at the day, it is my eighth wedding anniversary today and my wife's at home with a sick baby. So I want to give her a shout out. So we'll get started. So this right here is a kind of a history of our general fund cash and I think it's important just to talk about the different lines. So the green line is our ACFIR. So that's our truly audited cash number. That line always varies from our blue line or our red line. The blue line is kind of, I don't want to call it our best guess. It's an educated guess when we adopt the budget as to what we think the cash will start at in each fiscal year. And, and of course, it uses the assumptions of revenue and expenses to kind of build the second year beginning cash. After the completion of every audit, so the green line, we then adjust our cash to the red line. That adjustment process includes accounting for things that are encumbered and/or already spoken for in our cash reserves. An example of that is ARPA. And so you can see the green line grows faster than the red line because in 2021, we received $9 million of ARPA and then 2022 received another $9 million. Some of that was put into other funds based on the adopted recommendations of council of how to spend that funding, but a majority of it was included in the general fund. But that's the primary difference between the green and the red line. I'll also stop and say, while we're getting closer to the end of the fiscal year, we're working on projecting the cash. The current general fund 10-year plan would project that we end the, the year at about $8 million. I'm hopeful, given some of the activities that we've done year to date, that we might end up closer to 10 and we'll refine that number over the coming month as we head in towards council actually approving the adopted budget. So the next slide I wanted to talk about, and I really wanted to focus on '25, '26, understanding that this budget problem, as Barry alluded to, did exist in '23, '24 and '24, '25. Today, we're talking about the '25, '26 and the '26, '27 budget. So I kind of wanted to give a high level overview of kind of the budget deficit, so to speak. And so you can see there, the adopted revenues were 110, 110 million, 473,000 and then the adopted expenses were 111.9 million, almost, for an adopted deficit of 1.4 million. Since that time, we saw revenue reductions of about 1.6 million. There were changes to the CalPERS unfunded liability due to the discount rate being lowered after they earned a large amount of money. And then actually, the following year, Hers did not meet their 7%. So they saw what they would consider a loss. Anything under a 7% earning is a loss. And so between those two things, we saw increases in that '25, '26 year to the expected unfunded liability payments of about 2.8 million. Additionally, at the time of budget, there was some union negotiations in process that had not concluded. Those added about $2.9 million of expenses. Then there were other expense increases for about 1.1 million. Then in May 21, May 21st, 2024, we brought to council some recommended cuts. This is when there were 12 firefighters recommended to be cut, nine police officers at that time, an assistant city attorney position that ended up actually being a cancellation of the contract with the county to provide a community prosecution, some development services positions, and then a position in our reprographics department. Some of those you'll see throughout the presentation. All told, that meant after those cuts and after all those kind of increased costs or changes in our revenue assumptions, that we were still about a $5.3 million budget problem. With the budget that we're, I'm about to go through, we have solved that problem. When I use the term solve that problem, it's, it's not without pain or other cuts. There are definitely going to be some ramifications for some of the expense reductions that we had to make as part of this budget. Council will remember and I'll try to point it out as we get to those slides, that there were also some assumed increases to revenues that we have realized in this as well, i.e. cannabis tax changes that were done at the first meeting in March. So you'll see those throughout this presentation, but as we kind of increased some revenues and then of course decreased expenses, we were able to arrive at a budget with a surplus in each year. So I'm going to go through that entire details now. So I'm going to start by providing kind of a high level overview of these slides because we're going to get very familiar with these slides over the next few minutes here. This is an internal service fund slide. The graph, like the, the donut chart on the left is a representation of FY 2027, breaking down the budget and kind of those broad categories that we typically talk about budgets in: personnel, O and M, fixed, capital, debt. And then there's this new little category called SPIDA. It's short for software-based IT arrangement, information technology arrangement. So it's basically a requirement of GFOA that we track that similar to debt. And then you'll see a total budget and then down there at the bottom right is the number of positions that are included in this budget. For the internal service funds, they provide services to all of our departments, not just the general fund, but the focus of the presentation this evening is on the general fund. So you'll see right above the donut chart, there will be a percent general fund breakdown and, and that gives you the, a rough estimate of the impact to the general fund of this department. So this first department is our records division. It's supervised by the city clerks department or it falls under the city clerk department, but it's the records division. And as you can see here, this is a department that we've recommended a reduction of one FTE as part of this budget. I will also comment that there is a position in here that is fully funded by REU. They had a, a Nick Lex to tell the story, but they had a pretty substantial records that needed to be archived load out there. And so they have a position that's helping them get caught up, not just with physical paper, but I think that's going to become a digital type of endeavor here soon as well. The next budget here is the reprographics department. As you can see here, there's a reduction of one FTE. This was actually acknowledged back in the May 21st meeting that we previously mentioned. This budget is 53% general fund and the, the reductions in the budget are largely the result of the removal of the one position. But throughout this presentation, you're going to see this idea of that pars went away. And so two things are happening if you remove a position, but we also had a substantial pars rate, which was the result of our pars unfunded liability. That pars unfunded liability went from being, if you associated it to payroll, between the unfunded liability and the normal cost, it was about 100% of payroll. And this budget, it's only normal cost and so that's lowered to about 2% on the city cost side. So you'll notice in some of these departments, a reduction in the personnel costs. Sometimes that would be because the number of positions have been reduced. Sometimes that's a result of also those positions that left had pars and we no longer have pars in that budget. Another thing I want to point out, this is a good slide to do it, on the number of positions, you'll see 3.5. This graph, the chart is reflecting FTEs, so full-time equivalents. So in the reprographics mail department, there's two full-time employees and three half-time employees. So those three half-time employees become one and a half FTEs for a total of three and a half FTEs.
Can, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Just because we don't have this printed out, so I won't be able to go back to it to remember. On the first slide, did you, did, did O and M go up double? I'm sorry, the first of the...
Yeah, this is a result of the new IQM2 software system. It's going to cost us more money. So we have to recognize that increased cost here and...
So it's just a new computer system?
The new system to actually run the agendas that get sent out to public and to council for the meetings.
It's like a computer thing, software or something?
Yeah, it's a software.
Okay.
So this next department, this is a good opportunity for me to stop and talk about cross charges. When we, as a city, recognize personnel expenses, that doesn't always mean that it's a position in that department. Sometimes you are either charging other departments or you are receiving charges from departments. In the case of employer services, which is managed by our personnel department, they have cross charges from anybody who is involved in labor negotiations and/or issues. They charge this department, so both of the gentlemen sitting on my right, charge this department to help with labor negotiations and different items that come up. There's some staff in my department that charges this department as well. And then of course, the personnel department probably is the lion's share of that. But as you can note at the bottom, there is no full-time positions or any type of position that actually is housed within this division. And this division is 59% general fund. The next budget is volunteer services. This department's budget overall has gone down. This is somewhat of recognition as we go through the budget process, the departments, you know, their task to not just come up with what they need from an expenditure standpoint, but also make sure that the charges within the department are making sense. And so there was a decision made to kind of change the way the person in this position is charging their time. So they're actually charging more time out of this department to other kind of divisions within the personnel umbrella. And so that's why that's, that's the major reason that's going down. The next department, this is one of those, I think one of our council members is intimately aware with what I'm about to say. This department's largely driven by increases to our insurance costs. We have seen substantial increases over the past almost six, seven years at this point. It continues to go up. We've built in some pretty substantial increases. I will warn council, it feels like no matter what we do, we're chasing a runaway train. And so there is some risk here that we might be back to council six months from now or a year from now saying, hey, it's even higher than we thought. But we have built in some increases for the increases in the insurance costs and also some increases for kind of our claims and different claims that we have against the city, the cost of the, kind of either litigating them and/or settling them. The cost of the kind of either litigating them and or settling them within this budget. But this budget, in the future, you're going to start to see risk liability and workers comp distinctly separated. It used to be all in one fund, one department, frankly, kind of confusing for our city attorney and our personnel department to manage their separate pieces. With the new system and an opportunity to look at our chart of accounts, we in finance made the decision that we were going to separate those. This is the first budget where we're actually fully able to separate them. But given the fact that we're trying to have a historical like context of these departments conversation, I went ahead and combined them together for the last time this budget. In the future, we will, we will start talking about them as two distinct internal service funds. So the next department is the building maintenance department. I think what stood out to me on this chart was, or on this slide was the FTEs. From 2018 to 2025, there's an increase of, you know, three and a half FTEs. We took a part-time position, made it a full-time and then added three FTEs on top of that. And it's a large increase. Travis and his team have kind of this industry standard and the industry standard is one position per 50,000 square feet. There was a handout that council received where it's quoted as saying one position for every 70,000 square feet is our current service level. With those additional positions, Travis has actually refined that number even further. And he said it's closer to one to every 100,000 feet of square, square footage. So while we have increased positions here, we're still well below the industry standard that they measure themselves against. And that was the reason for the increases at the time was to try to get to a better level of service for all of our buildings throughout the community that we own and maintain.
Yeah, and if I may just add to that, to connect this slide to the slide you saw two, two back. The service levels can, and your ability to maintain adequate levels of maintenance on your facilities can impact what your claims experience looks like and what your overall liability picture is. Now, our insurance premiums are driven less by our individual experience than it is about the statewide trend and what we're seeing throughout California overall. But I do just want to highlight that the more we end up with shortfalls on maintenance of the facilities that we have, the more exposure we have to liability overall.
Is this fiscal year beginning in 25 or fiscal year ending?
That's ending, that's ending 25. And actually, good point, good questioner point. I use the adopted budget for that kind of column there.
So it's not the actual numbers?
It's not actual expense because it's not over yet. I think it's more appropriate to compare adopted to adopted as opposed to amended, which frankly, you can get into a conversation about what amended number do you want to use? Do you want to use the amended number that includes carryovers, which then could make these numbers look huge and they're not even comparable? Or do you want to use just the amended number that is actual actions taken by council? Which to be frank, is usually pretty small, that those types of adjustments aren't usually very big. So I just took adopted because frankly, even from an adopted perspective, we had a lot of work to do in terms of cutting our budgets. So that, that's why I use that, and I think it's a better representation of what we want to compare to.
Do we have like 24's numbers, the actuals?
Yeah, I don't have them on this slide, of course, but yes, I have them. Sorry. So the next one here is our public relations, marketing, communications. You might hear it called any or all of those depending on the day. This down there, if you're looking at the FTEs, you'll see in 2018, there were zero. This division did not exist in 2018. I'd have to look to Barry, what year did we stand it up? 2019, 1920? So and around the 2019, 2020 timeframe, we stood this up. As you can notice, there was a position that we attrited from this department in the January timeframe. And so they will be removing one FTE in the current budget. Also, I will shout them out, they did a very good job of analyzing all their O and M and making substantial cuts to their O and M, as you can see there. The next slide here is for our fleet department. Again, I will call out or shout out that there is six more FTEs in this department from 2018. Some of these are directly paid for by solid waste. Solid waste was effectively screaming for a better level of service. And they were willing to put their money where their mouth is, so to speak. Additionally, every other department, every time we would sit down and talk about fleet as a group of department directors and budget, our budget team, every department wanted a better level of service. And frankly, our fleet department always said, we need more people to get these vehicles turned around faster. And so between solid waste and you name the department, police, fire, REU, everybody wanting a better level of service, there were increases to this department that were given from the kind of 2018 to 2022 timeframe. I do want to point out, this is a department that over the years, we've seen gets heavily impacted by inflation. So their O and M expenses have gone up pretty substantially over the years. And there is some, some risk here with the numbers we've adopted that we don't properly encapsulate it. I do know over the years, I remember saying to council multiple times, we don't have quite enough money in our parts account due to inflation. And so depending on where inflation goes over the next year or two, we might be back to council asking for more money for our fleet parts that we're putting on our vehicles. But the fleet department maintains all city vehicles. Sorry, I probably should be doing that on every slide, but they maintain all the city vehicles. They're 24% of the general fund, 24% to the general fund of their cost. The next department is our IT department. So within this, you're going to see from 2018 to 2025, a reduction of one position and then one more position in 2027. On the next slide, you're going to see those positions have been moved over to our communications that used to be recognized as only radios, but we, IT has made the decision to kind of transition some of the costs of things like the citywide telephones that we use, the internet service that we use into the communications division instead of IT. So there's a shift of positions and also a shift of some O and M expenses from this budget to that budget. And so in a couple of slides, you'll see the communications budget and you'll say, wow, this looks like it increased a lot. It's net neutral between these two. I will point out, if you were doing the math in 25, you might be, well, it looks like they have one extra position. There was somebody that retired in 2025. The next department here is the geographic information systems. They provide kind of mapping services throughout the city. They're 33% general fund, largely their budget is the same other than their fixed charges from the other departments. This is a good opportunity for me to talk about fixed charges. Fixed charges are something that have different measurements depending on the fixed charges. But they're charges that they, like geographic information systems receives from other internal service funds for, if they own a vehicle, they're going to pay fleet some amount for that vehicle's maintenance. Every time we do a budget, we re kind of allocate those based on those allocation methodologies. And so sometimes departments can be hit negatively or more positively depending on those, those measurements and how it might fluctuate from budget to budget. The next one is the communications budget. And as I referenced, you'll see some increases here of a shift from in positions and in personnel costs from the IT budget. Importantly, also, there's a capital line here, probably the first time we've seen a capital line of one of any note. And they're planning to start to repair some of our switches and infrastructure around how our actual network works within city hall and other facilities. That increased O and M is largely the result of the shift of actually the internet services from IT to here. So now move, we're kind of moving into departments that live within the general fund. I always like to kind of explain general government as it's kind of like an internal service fund that somebody years ago decided to leave in the general fund and do what we call a cost allocation plan. This is the first slide where you're going to start seeing a call out at the bottom of that kind of chart where we indicate revenues. So the total is kind of total expenses and then a revenues call out. So the revenues for this group of departments is what we call our cost allocation plan. That effectively is very similar to being an internal service fund and bringing in a revenue. This revenue just comes into the general fund. We do not allocate to the general fund departments. We measure what the allocation would be, but we don't charge the general fund departments because effectively we would be moving money from the general fund to the general fund. And that doesn't really make sense. So effectively, any cost difference that you see there is services that these departments provide to our, our major general fund departments, which would be police, fire, public works, community services, which is parks and recreation. So as you can see here, the total budget of all general government, I'm going to get through, I'm going to go through each of the general government departments in just a second. Quick summary or quick listing of those is city manager, city attorney, city clerk, financial services, which includes finance, treasure and purchasing, and the personnel department. As you will see there, there's a reduction from the previous budget of one position. That one position is the assistant city clerk that we attrited when Ms. Tipton was promoted to the city clerk.
So the revenues, where does that come in at?
It comes into the general fund.
The transfer?
It comes into internal departments would be the line that you see.
Internal department.
I did, on the, on the 10-year plan, you would see it called out as internal departments. For a lot of the materials later on in this presentation and the materials that were in the staff report, it, I did try to break out separately from internal departments, this revenue and what we call our pilot revenue or our property in lieu of tax revenue from the REU.
Yeah. But are they sometimes lumped together?
They are, on our 10-year plan, they are always lumped together, yes. But I just felt like it was useful information for council to see those separated a little more and a little more granularity. Okay, so first, you all actually are part of our general government. I forgot to mention city council. So city council, relatively small budget. It's, you know, honestly, it's heavily impacted in terms of the quantity of budget by city council members who utilize different city benefits. So that's the main reason it's going down is just less council members utilizing, let's say, less of the benefits that we offer to council members. And then I'll also call out the fixed charges because that's probably the most glaring one. As part of this transition to the new system, I would say there have been a lot of questions, but there, there was this question of, well, should we really be allocating to city council for this item? And so there were some decisions made to say, hey, let's not allocate for that because effectively we're just allocating it here and then it's getting spread back out to everybody else. And so we made some changes to some of our fixed charge methodology so that it doesn't have to kind of run through city council, which frankly, as you can see here, isn't much of a department. And you all aren't even full-time in positions, but we count them as full-time positions. You're not paid like one, so. So that's the largest.
Part-time, but it for sure is full-time.
Yes, paid, part-time, full-time count. So five positions, this hasn't changed. And as you can see there, the kind of the breakdown of a pretty small budget to our general fund. And again, this budget, like city manager, like financial services that you'll see is part of that cost allocation plan. And so I think I was about to say it and then I may have kind of veered off course. Of the general government, 33% is basically for services that are rendered for other general fund departments. As I said, police, fire, public works, development services, community services, things like that. So it's not like the cost to the city manager's office, it's the cost to those departments for the services that the city manager or city council provides. The next one is the city manager's office. I'll call out a significant decrease to personnel. And that's largely the result of pars decreases. That's one big thing, but also more cross charges for the services that they're providing directly for departments. I use, Steve's not here, so I guess we can pick on him. But Steve, he cross charges out a lot of his time because he oversees housing, RAB, airport. So very little of Steve's actual time stays within the city manager's budget, even though his FTE is allocated to the city manager budget. So those are what we call cross charges out. The city manager took the lead and reduced his O and M through this process. I also wanted to call out, you'll see, well, why did city manager's office go up one FTE from 2018 to 2025? Some of you may remember, the city manager now used to be an assistant city manager who was assigned to REU. He was the REU director. At that time, he was actually an FTE associated to REU. So when the 2018 budget was adopted, he was, he was still in REU as the assistant city manager. Right after the budget was adopted, he was promoted to the city manager. And that's what set in motion kind of that first kind of organizational chart change, which then became an ACM, who was also over personnel, which are both general fund departments. So we went ahead and moved that FTE to the city manager's office at that time. Since then, that assistant city manager has retired and now Steve Bate is that kind of fourth FTE in that department. Next up is the city attorney's office. Same number of FTEs, largely an unchanged budget, other than some increased personnel costs due to just the difference of costs associated to the employees from the previous budget. And some of that is based on you project, and many of you will know that some of those FTEs for our city attorney's office were unfilled for many years. We just recently have filled them and so this reflects kind of the cost of those positions as, as budgeted. Next budget up is the city clerk's office. You'll see personnel, whoa, it dropped significantly again. Yes, some of that is because we reduced a position. But again, these small departments, when they no longer have pars, it's a substantial savings to the budget. And so this one particularly had a lot of pars costs in it, and so it's gone down as a result. This also has one less FTE as part of this budget, as we have made council aware for some number of months now. And the next budget that's up is personnel. Personnel, little increase to their personnel costs. Again, a lot of that's probably a shifting of cross charges, as I mentioned, with volunteer services. They're probably associating more of their time to the services that they do as a personnel department as, as opposed to putting the cost in volunteer services where the efforts aren't, aren't as much as in their personnel department. The number of positions, you'll see it went from six to eight. That was to reflect the, just the sheer magnitude of the workload that they had over those years. And then you'll, you might ask, well, there's one less FTE in this current budget. The next slide will be my department. There was a decision made in the last six months to shift a position that would work in personnel and kind of help with payroll processing from personnel to financial services, just to be more effective and have more backup in terms of our payroll processing. Debbie Ivy, wonderful lady, used to work for finance, actually. That, she would actually plan her vacations around payroll processing weeks. And she was dedicated to making sure we were all paid and she would be here and do it. But we're hoping by shifting that position, we're able to get some redundancies, not just on the personnel side, but on the finance side to allow people to not have to plan their lives around payroll every two weeks. So that's part of the effort and just really trying to recognize where the work is best performed. So the next department is financial services. And as you can see there, as I pointed out, that additional FTE from personnel. Prior to that, from 2018 to 2025, we actually reduced a part-time position along the way in our department, mainly because we were never using it. I'm sure there's directors in here who would laugh at me for not having an admin assistant or an executive assistant. I'm sure my own staff sometimes thinks I should have one, but that was, we used to have a part-time. We would never fill it and so a decision was made to just give up the FTE years ago. So that was that shift. And again, financial services includes finance, treasure and our purchasing department. I also want to point out the largest increase here in O and M is actually to our, our audit contract. We have an audit contract that is paid partly out of finance, finance directly. It's also paid for directly out of different departments who have specific needs out of the audit functions, i.e. housing, RAB, airports. There's some specific engagement, engagement items that they have to pay for. But we've seen a pretty substantial increase over the years to that contract, and so that's being reflected here as part of this budget. The next budget is kind of non-departmental and other, it's kind of a catch-all. Non-departmental pays for our economic development contracts. It paid for the community prosecutor. Actually, that's the largest drop to the O and M is the reduction to the $100,000. is the reduction to the hundred thousand dollars a year for the community prosecutor. Additionally, the other includes our debt service department. As you can see there, the debt in split align is our city issued debt. So we have bond payments we make every year. I always kind of like to brag on council a little bit on this. We are in a very good position from a debt perspective. We do not have a lot of debt as a city. You know, two million dollars is not a large amount of your, our budget to be paying on debt. And as you can see in FY twenty-seven, that drops to one point three million. Stays around there for some, about ten to twelve years. And I want to say most of our debt is paid off in about fifteen years. Will actually be all of our, our bond debt paid off. We will continue to look for refunding opportunities as they present themselves to, to cut into those actual debt payments. But that's probably the largest part of this budget. It's just those debt payments. Another thing that falls in here is actually animal control. That's a million dollar a year contract that is in O and M. That's our contract that we have for our animal control services through Haven Humane. So now kind of transitioning away from kind of the general government, non-departmental, and into kind of our departments. So transportation engineering, this is streets and engineering, this department. And I see that we did not put the FTEs in, so I apologize for that. There is a recommendation due to the volume of work that our engineering department has is to increase their staff by three FTEs as part of this budget. As you can see on this slide, our plan budget is for them never to impact the general fund. So engineering does that through cross-charges for the services they perform. So they do work for grant-funded projects that are general fund. They, but they, a lot of their work is done for the utilities, wastewater, water, electric. And so they're cross-charging their time out in order to provide engineering services on those projects. And so that's how they actually kind of pay for themselves out of the engineering department. Additionally, this budget includes our streets department. So our streets department is a hundred percent paid for with gas tax and we make, basically, gas tax is remitted to the city by the state. We collect it into a special fund where it is held, and then we, as we spend the money, we transfer it every year into the general fund based on what we call the streets report. Once we finalize that and we know the amount that we are legally allowed to transfer from that fund, we transfer it over here. But from a budget perspective, we budget this to be net zero to the general fund for both streets and engineering. The next department up on the list is development services. As you can see here, there's, it, it appears that the positions have grown. Most of this is a result of things that are funded by cannabis. Housing funds a code enforcement officer. Frankly, the largest increase from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-five was moving code enforcement under development services, but also since then, code enforcement has grown substantially with a position for cannabis, maybe two positions for cannabis. A position for STR enforcement on the, on the code enforcement side, a position on the planning side for STRs. So there's, there's been, most of the increases in this department are things that are paid for through fees that we charge for those services. Um, and as you can see here, I also wanted to call out specifically the revenues. We, we're assuming, well, one, we're recognizing increased revenues from cannabis permits and STR permits to the actual kind of historical amounts we're observing. As we kind of chart this budget, that might require us to start, I may potentially consider adding an FTE for some of those services if, if we continue to see revenues that are as high as they have been, and I don't expect anything to change on that front. Additionally, we have had the conversation with council to, that we need to make some revenue adjustments in this area that will help to better offset the costs that we're incurring to provide the services to the community. And so there's assumed increases here that will happen as part of master fee schedule updates over the coming years. Yes, it includes.
The five point two.
It includes an increase for those.
So you are estimating maybe between five hundred and seven hundred fifty thousand more?
The increases for the fees and kind of for planning and building and permit center, we're thinking is two, three hundred thousand. But there is a lot more revenue we've seen, well, and frankly, we've seen a lot of revenue increase because of code enforcement activities as well. So we're kind of trying to capture some of, recognize that that revenue is actually happening. That revenue, a lot of times, is a very, let's call it questionably collected, but we tried to do a good job of actually only recognizing the amount that will get collected as part of this budget.
And then, go ahead.
I just, I, I believe Mr. Robinett meant that it's the ability to collect is questionable, not that the methods to collect are questionable.
I knew what he meant. Would have been more fun.
Thanks for that clarification. Yeah, so it's the ability to collect it is very questionable, but the reality is by having more code enforcement activities, there is a lot more revenue being generated and paid, even though some of it gets written off and it's never paid. It truly is a revenue source when you go do those, those activities. And while that's not what you're trying to do, what you're trying to do is get people to comply with the law.
Sure.
It still is what's happening, right? And especially around the cannabis world, there's a, that's why we said we would do that is to help the legal people be successful. You need to go out and kind of, I don't want to say attack the black market, but you need to go out and force the black market and keep them from growing inside our city limits.
Does this factor in doing the automatic transfers?
No, not yet, actually. Does not factor that in yet. You're talking about for the STR. Yeah, that would actually be a revenue that would come into the general fund. I'll get to those in a few slides, but actually through TOT. And Barry and I have been in contact with them. We're hoping to get something to council.
Oh, so that's not affecting this budget?
Not, it's not in this budget. Yeah, that would be separate.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to move on to the next department. Community services. Sometimes you'll see me type this as parks and rec, and I think every time the community services director will send me an email and say, do you only mean parks and rec or is it everything? It's, it's everything. So it's parks, recreation. I, I, I will point out when we, when council sees the proposed budget, another area where we found an opportunity with the new system to better account for things was in this department. The aquatic center was kind of shoved in some recreations, some in parks. And so we're taking this opportunity to try to split it out and really account for what does it cost for us to operate the aquatic center from, whether it be chemicals or staff out there to keep the aquatic center open as its own separate division. Additionally, as council knows, we are now running the Reading Sports Park. And so that's another new kind of division within community services that you will see here. That's actually accounts for some of the increases you're seeing on this slide is the Reading Sports Park, both in terms of revenues and expenses. I'm going to do, sorry, there is, this one I actually need to go through a, a pretty good breakdown of the FTEs. The changes in FTEs from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-five. So the biggest change from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-five was wildfire mitigation. REU is funding seven positions within the parks department that cross-charge to REU for those services. The other part of that that you'll see is actually within the fire department, they have fifteen positions that cross-charge from fire for actual firefighting services. So that's all part of the wildfire mitigation plan that was approved by council. What year was that? Twenty twenty-one. And so there was, there's twenty-two positions within the general fund that actually are there to provide services for REU. And then secondarily, you're going to say, well, there's another eighteen positions, Greg, in this budget. What are those? And I think it's a fair question. First, Reading Sports Park is eleven point seven five positions. Only two of those positions, I believe I have that right, are full-time positions. There's a gardener and there will be a supervisor out there. The rest of those are basically part-time positions that are working out there. We have a new CAL FIRE mitigation grant for these two years of the budget. In year three, that, that will go away. So there's cross-charges built in for those positions, but there are more positions of six point eight eight for those services. During, uh, from the last budget to this budget, there was a position converted from three-quarter time to full-time to provide better services at the aquatic center and hopefully actually increase revenues as a result of providing those better services. And then there's actually some cuts in this department. As part of this budget, we reduced our part-time staff for both the aquatic center and recreation programs by what's the equivalent of two point seven FTEs. And we cut the parks' part-time maintenance workers. Barry sometimes fondly refers to them as our mow and blow guys. And so they're going to have to modify some of their service practices around that for two point three nine.
Quick question?
Yes, sir.
So is it built into the model with the Reading Sports Park net zero with the assumed lease of the restaurant?
Yes, that's the plan as of now, is that that will be a net zero to the general fund. And not just Reading Sports Park, probably this entire budget. It's safe to say we are going to have to be very diligent in managing this budget, just to make sure that everybody is standing within the budget, because as I've said to different council members on this stage here, and privately, we don't have reserves that we can continue to just spend. So while we adopt a budget that has a surplus or a small surplus, we need to be very diligent and that's assuming everything comes in exactly as the plan, both revenues and expenses. And so our job is going to be to be very diligent on the expense side. And Reading Sports Park is a good example of that, is to make sure for them that their revenues and expenses are aligning throughout the budget.
So is the revenue increase, is that supposed to be the part?
Mostly sports park there, but there, as council knows, we did bring a March meeting as well, discuss, discussion, March actual budget workshop meeting, a discussion around modifying some of the policies within the recreation department and how they are actually going to carry out their fees in the coming years. So we're expecting some increased revenues there as well. But most of it is the sports park. Um, the next department is the fire department. And as you can see here, from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-five, there was an increase of about thirty-five positions. Like I said, fifteen of those were funded by REU wildfire mitigation. And then there was the reduction twelve that was brought to council, uh, May twenty-first of twenty twenty-four. Still net, they're up about twenty-three positions. They no longer have a part-time position within this department. They are all full-time positions. Actually, you know what? I just realized that that's a miscount, and I'm not sure why, and I apologize for that. We actually, as part of this budget, did cut, um, as we were developing the budget, uh, the assistant fire marshal position. So there is one additional FTE out of this budget. So I'm not sure why it's not showing. I will take this time to admit that the way our new system counts FTEs is not as seamless as our old system, but that's just because we told our old system exactly how to do it, and now we're learning what this system tries to do. And we're trying to kind of compensate for that. And so what happens is, and I'm, now I know what happened. Sometimes we take, we think we take a position out, all the money goes away, but somehow it still counts an FTE. And so that's going to be something as we refine the budget document, where I'm going to be paying very close attention to, to make sure it's right. And so I was like, wait a second, there was another position that we cut. So as part of the recommendation in front of council, this is a modification, it was outlined in the staff report that we have not previously talked about with council, is the removal of the fire marshal position. Those services are now being performed by one of the deputy, there's two deputy fire chiefs, and he's performing those services as the fire marshal.
So do we have a fire marshal?
That, one of the deputy fire chiefs.
Is now a fire marshal?
Is, is now the fire marshal.
Okay, and this was an assistant fire marshal?
No, this was the actual fire marshal position.
And the, did he retire? Where did he go?
He retired.
He retired?
And then.
So we just promoted somebody else?
We had a deputy fire marshal who was, who was doing other duties, and he's now inherited the duties of the fire marshal.
But he doesn't get the title?
It's, uh, well, he's actually a higher position already, so.
It's a better position?
The deputy fire chief was the fire marshal's boss.
Oh, wow.
And so the fire marshal.
So you got demoted, is what you're saying?
The fire marshal is no longer there, so the deputy fire marshal will assume those duties.
Oh.
So just to seek clarification here, I guess this is one of the examples when it says twenty twenty-five position hundred twelve, those are budgeted position.
Yes.
Those are not the current actual position.
Not necessarily filled. Yeah, it's the budgeted positions, like, good, this is actually a great example. Twenty twenty-five is the current fiscal year. They have a hundred and twelve FTEs. We told council we're going to reduce those through attrition. I believe right now they're down, well, they're probably down twelve, but now we told them they need to be down thirteen with the fire marshal change, right? So they're not quite to that twelve number yet. So in year one, we, I showed you guys year two. Year one, we actually left that FTE in there because we don't want to have to lay somebody off. We want it to happen through attrition. So the next time somebody retires, we will attrit that position to be down to the ninety-nine full-time budgeted.
So last year, how many were actually filled? Any idea?
I think they actually got up to one twelve. I'm looking at Jared to see if he can give me a head nod. They were up to one fourteen at one point last year. How, oh, because we had those two, yeah, the, the two, um, we were hiring people in advance of people retiring. So we knew people were retiring. They had an academy open. Is that what that one fourteen was, Jared? The, the two positions filled in advance? No. Oh, safer, okay. All right, safer. Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Okay. I mean, this is concerning to me that, you know, the always reduction in fire personnel.
Well, keep in mind, we, we did the safer grant in anticipation of opening Fire Station Nine. So we had hired the, the employees, they were working out of Station Five. And then we thought we were going to be able to get Station Nine opened. Those would move over to Station Nine. So with the elimination of those twelve, we still have three on every single engine.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
But that's a good point. Okay, the next department is the police department. As you can, there's kind of two sets of graphs here. I thought it was important. I probably should have discussed that like Barry just did for the number of people on each engine. But in this department, it's important to talk about sworn officers, and then I also find it useful because I think maybe a previous police chief, Bill Schuler, told me one time how important CSOs are. And so I called these two types of positions out separately over here on the left as a way to try to reflect those important services that the, that are forward-facing to the community in the police department. And so over the years, the police department went up, you know, forty positions, including F, um, part-times, and as you can see there, they've went down again by about sixteen positions there. Before I point out, point out those sworn and CSOs, I kind of want to go through that change of sixteen positions there. First, minus eight police officers net. So there was a minus twelve, four have been funded through other means. And then minus two CSOs, which is, the first time we're discussing that is this evening. That over the past couple of years, the police department has identified opportunities to remove an account clerk and a custodian. That's being recognized as part of this budget. They converted an admin assistant from full-time to three-quarter time. And then also as part of this budget, we're removing the full-time equivalent's worth of four point two FTEs. And so, uh, so that's on the cadets, mostly a result of not running the downtown shuttle services anymore, that we were running for a short period of time there. Um, on the left there, I want to point out the number of sworn and, and CSOs. So sworn officers in twenty eighteen was a hundred and six. Went up by, you know, most of that going up was done by twenty twenty-two. In twenty twenty-five, we got a hundred and twenty-two sworn police officers, and that's been reduced down in this budget to one fourteen. CSOs, we were at four in twenty eighteen. We went up to twelve by twenty, again, most of that was done by twenty twenty-two. As council knows, a lot of modifications to the service levels were done in twenty twenty-two. Since then, we've seen revenue reductions and we've been needing to slowly consider reduction of service levels culminating in this budget we're presenting right now. So then ten CSOs, a removal of two CSOs as part of this bu, uh, proposed budget.
So just to seek clarification again. So hundred twenty-two is again the budgeted number for the year end twenty twenty-five, financial year in twenty twenty-five. But my understanding is the actual number right now, even within this financial year of a last, correct me if I'm wrong, last twelve months or so is less than that. What's the actual number in last twelve months?
Do you know the actual number?
Okay, so just to clarify that adopted versus the current one, or over the last twelve months or so is hundred seven. Thank you. Thank you.
And that's why you'll see there are police positions being recruited actively right now. Because planning that, that number of positions versus one oh seven that Barry said are currently filled.
But just, I just wanna, uh, clarify that because we are not cutting any further.
Yes.
What we have as of today or last six months or last twelve months, so, thank you.
That, the thing I will mention about both police and fire, as we finish the ten-year plan, which I expect to, you know, really when I say that, finish years three through ten, there will be some work to, cause built into this budget is assume that we're charging ARPA a certain amount for the park rangers. And then on the fire side, that we have the safer grant for the next couple of years. Those will both go away and we're gonna have to absorb those positions within our long-term ten-year plan in year three of this budget. So I wanted to point that out as that's something we're working on right now. New system, new problems, right? So we're just trying to get all the data sets to match up just right, so that years three through ten work the way we expect them to. Um, those of you who don't know, not to nerd out on it, but our ten-year plan does a lot of pretty sophisticated cost, like analysis of our personnel costs. And so that if unfunded liability were to change volatile, which it tends to do, it goes up and down pretty substantially. We're able to actually call that number out separately in our ten-year plan. It gives us a better way to actually forecast the future of our personnel costs, which we'll get to in just a second with the general fund, is about roughly seventy percent of our budget. And so it's important to know what your personnel is costing in the future, um, based on a good model of how to, how to actually forecast that out, especially, um, that really started in earnest about eight years ago when the discount rate changes were, were announced. And we then realized, holy smokes, unfunded liability is gonna be on a steep curve. We're now at the point where unfunded liability is largely flattened out, but you still see some decent volatility um, year to year, depending on the performance of the CalPERS fund. So before I get into like the high-level macro of expenses, I'm gonna take a detour down, uh, revenues. Um, I'm gonna try to make this quick, cause most of these revenues have been discussed with council previously. Um, I wanted to start again, council's probably tired of listening to me about this, but um, I wanted to start with a history of our tax revenues. And really, I'm gonna focus on sales tax, cause it's probably the most substantial. On this graph, the sales tax is the blue line. Um, as you can see there, and it's not as substantial when you happen on here with things like TOT, but there's a pretty good, you know, frankly, explosion from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two in sales tax revenue. Substantial increases, it was part of what was increasing our general fund reserves as well as, you know, better than expected on the expense side in a couple of those years. And so we were increasing reserves and there was a decision made at that time to provide services to the community based on that higher level of revenues. Almost immediately, those revenues went away. And I feel like since then, we've been trying to tell council that we're, there's a service level reduction coming unless these revenues kind of recover. And so most of that story is told through that one line there, frankly. Um, and the green line, you can't even really see it, but it's done better than we expected. It's a little steeper than it otherwise usually was. And so it's helped to offset some of that. Otherwise, um, some of those revenue losses would be even, uh, more painful. And so as we go into the next budget, or as we go into, you know, hopefully in June, adopting this budget, and then I'll do my first quarterly update in November. Um, it, it's important, over the next couple of slides, we're gonna talk about our revenue assumptions. It's, it's important to realize if, if I say I want one of those quarterly updates or mid-year updates or mid-cycle updates, that revenue is worse than the projection. That means if it's five hundred thousand dollars worse and you had a balanced budget, exactly balanced, that means we now have a five hundred thousand dollar budget shortfall. And so I point that out because that's effectively what's been happening in the last three years um, through this kind of history of tax revenues. Um, there was a couple of years there where it was way overperforming our expectations. And then we kind of accounted for that in terms of the services that were gonna be put into the community. And then almost immediately, those, you know, those revenues started to decline. So this is a reminder to council of our current, uh, sales tax revenue forecast. Um, over on the right, it kind of goes through the assumptions. So we're assuming this current year will come in at the exact same amount as fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, currently, right now, it, it looks like it's lagging a little behind already. So I just wanna point that out to council. There, there's already some risk that twenty-four, twenty-five doesn't come in at what this budget thinks it's gonna come in. Um, mainly from the perspective of the number that you build on. So you have to arrive at a number for twenty-four, twenty-five to then arrive at a number for twenty-five, twenty-six. And since twenty-four, twenty-five is not completed, we have to make some kind of assumption. So we took a pretty conservative approach, that it was gonna be flat year over year. If I'm, you know, being honest, it, it might not do that. Um, we'll, we'll provide an update to council in the next couple of weeks for the third quarter. Um, so there's already some potential downside of sales tax in the current year. Um, where then we're, then this red line is the current assumed, assumed kind of sales tax for the next five years. Um, I point out the green and purple lines to point out that there is upside and downside to the potential outcomes. And it's important to think about that upside and downside because of what I just outlined for council. If a revenue is to come in lower than, you know, we're forecasting, then depending on how tight your budget is that year, you might have to immediately make modifications. We'll get into the exact kind of surplus we're budgeting in each year. But that's the important part of that conversation. Where are we tracking? And what does that tracking of revenue do to your future forecasted revenues as well? So not just what you're seeing in the current timeframe, but how, if you think that's the new normal and you're growing from that new normal, whether it's higher or lower, that impacts all the way down the line of, of your forecast.
I have a question. When's the last time we can change our prediction of twenty-five, twenty-six to one and a half percent instead of two and a half percent?
If you were to change that, i.e. tonight, it would likely mean in year two, we do not have a balanced budget. Um, one percent lower in the general fund would be about three hundred thousand, I would guess, per year, less revenue, three to four hundred thousand. In year two, our budget's about two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollars to the good. I can't remember the exact number, maybe two hundred thousand to the good. So just as an example, if you were to change that assumption, I mean, that's how tight this budget's gonna be. And that's some of why I'm belaboring the point is because particularly in year two, um, there's a lot of range of potential outcomes that we're gonna have to continue to monitor. I will say the budget before you in year one has a good surplus. With that surplus, it would help us kind of hopefully increase our reserves a little bit, not a lot. And then it would help us again to have a little bit higher level reserve that then we could use in the future to kind of buoy against maybe a one and a half instead of a two and a half, right? So the problem we have right now, and I pointed this out a little bit ago, is that our reserve isn't in a position to buoy a lot of impacts, right? So any downside means we're probably have to come back to council almost immediately and say, hey, revenues are below what we're thinking, we need to make more cuts or more modifications. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think that I'm trying to think through, uh, what the best policy is there. Do, are we presenting a balanced budget for the sake of balanced budget? It's essentially just magical numbers in reality, further, further out. Um, but what I'm hearing is that there would need to be further cuts that were made if we make different assumptions rather than quarterly making changements. I mean, sorry, making changes and amendments to the budget as we go.
Yeah, I, I, I will just point out that I believe this budget, we are gonna have to be faster to act than we were the last budget. Meaning the last budget, we continued to kind of tell council, well, hopefully it gets better and, and it never did, right? And so we continued to eat at our reserves at a faster rate than we previously anticipated. And I don't mean to speak for Barry, but he's, his voice isn't all there today. So, um, I don't believe this budget will be able to play it that slowly. If, if, if we see by December that revenues are off five hundred thousand dollars, right, total. I don't think, and I don't think we can tell council, oh, it's gonna be all right. I think we're gonna have to tell council, we need to make changes. Here are our recommended changes. How would council like to handle this? Or do they want us to go back to the drawing board? But we need to make changes soon.
So you're suggesting every six months rather than maybe?
Well, we come to council every three months. Typically, we only recommend changes every six months. I would look to Barry whether he would think we're gonna make changes in the neighborhood of three-month range, um, but that is a potential.
Yeah, when we go in September, it's very possible that if everything is still declining and we're seeing no recovery, that we may need to start making some moves at that point.
Ju- just to comment to what you said, like if we drop the assumption to one and a half percent, our, our property taxes have been coming in higher than our assumptions.
Yeah.
So we're not over-assuming on the property tax, and we may see a balance in that, which means that the sales tax comes in a little lower. And we are getting our property taxes over the next few weeks, and that will give us a better clue to where we don't over-assume on the property tax, but that might offset any kind of.
Yeah. Certainly could. Um, and the next slide's property tax. We did assume twenty-four, twenty-five would be up four and a half percent. Um, yeah, we'll get to that one just in the next slide. So it would have to beat that. Um, I think it's gonna come in right around that, if I'm being honest. But to your point, yes, when it comes to tax revenues and why we dwell, why we, I say we, you all can say me, when I present, why I dwell on revenues is because we don't, as a government, you don't have the opportunity to say, hey, I need more revenue, I'm gonna charge more. You are getting the tax revenues you're getting. And oftentimes, we don't even collect our own sales tax, right? Our, the sales tax is collected by the state and sent to us monthly. Frankly, it's sent to us monthly with estimates. And if I'm being honest, the state plays games with their estimates so that they can make money on the backs of every city in terms of having our cash in their bank account instead of in our bank account. And then they do their true-ups. And so what I've observed over the past couple of years, this is factual in what we're receiving, the true-ups are coming in much higher than they were in the previous years. And the allocations that are done at the other two months are much lower. And so to say that the state isn't playing a cash flow game with, with our money is, but it's legal. I guarantee you, it's legal. It's within their context to estimate our sales tax and then clean it up every quarter.
So at this point, I'd like to point out that, uh, it's, uh, really unfortunate that most of the portion of sales tax goes to the state, doesn't stay locally.
Yes, it's a very good point. It's not one that I necessarily plan to point out as we're talking about the, uh, general fund budget. But you know, a lot of people don't know that. We, the, we pay seven point two five percent when we're buying something, buying gas, well, even more than that with other taxes. But we pay seven point two five percent of sales tax. Of that sales tax, the city only gets one percent of the seven point two five. And so it, it is a very small amount. Uh, most of it goes to the state, some of it comes back to the county for specific programs. Um, there's actually a very good breakdown in our budget book. I encourage you all to read our budget book, it has a lot of great information.
Basically, whatever money we are generating here or paying to buy something, state is taking six point two five percent of that.
Yes, sir.
And leaving one percent, it actually is not even leaving. This money is going to the state and coming back. And it's like a dollar going there and coming back, and some of it's probably wasted, some of it is abuse, some of it is whatever, right? So just, this, this is not what most of the people understand.
As you say that, I guess it gives me an opportunity to tell you which taxes we collect for ourselves. We don't collect our own property tax, that's done by this, by the county. We do collect our own TOT, that's done in finance and treasure. And we do collect our own cannabis tax. And so those are the ones that we are actually the taxing kind of authority or agency, if you will. And so they, they file returns with, with our office. We review those returns, collect the money, audit those returns, things of that nature.
So I'll just take this opportunity to make one more point here, which is that it's unfortunate that most of the taxes we pay as public really go to the Washington DC and then to state for second, for Sacramento, second tier. And very little is actually left for local use and local decision-making, which is, in my opinion, is completely upside down because we had the least influence on Washington DC or Sacramento and much more locally. But unfortunately, it's an upside-down pyramid structure.
Uh, can we start using our, uh, little buttons? Anyways, wanna talk?
The enforcer. Um, okay, so I'm gonna move on to the property tax revenue. Um, so the, so the next one is the property tax revenue. As, as I just kind of alluded to with, uh, Mr. Latah's question, um, we assumed a four and a half percent increase for twenty-four, twenty-five. A lot of that was based on what we saw from our first installment from the county in January. And then from there, I will say, I, three percent might be a conservative assumption, right? Um, we, I, I think Barry and I felt very drawn to, with some of the volatility and some of the downside, trying to use a more conservative estimate across our major revenues. These are obviously our two biggest revenues. If you add these two up, they're sixty million dollars. Um, so we, we tried to be a little more conservative here. To the point of, the hope is between the two, hopefully they'll balance each other out. Maybe one will come in a little better, maybe one will come in a little worse. I will say property tax, usually if there's some type of big economic issue, um, use two thousand eight as an example, that impacts the housing market particularly. It takes two or three years for us to see this revenue go down. Whereas sales tax, it's pretty immediate. If you're seeing something happening in the economy, or, you know, if you're a business owner and you're feeling something, we're feeling it too in, in our, in our sales tax. Property tax takes a little more time to catch up. And, and again, red is the current forecast. Green is kind of maybe an upside scenario, purple is maybe a downside scenario. Transient occupancy tax, um, this one we use a four percent, traditionally been used by the general fund. If you can forecast what's gonna happen with transient occupancy tax for me, um, come talk to me. It's, it is all over the place. It has to do with fires, it has, even COVID drove a large amount of, uh, TOT to us. And that's actually the spike you see on the graph. This is a hard one to forecast, um, you know, so we use kind of this four percent. The reality is four percent of a seven million dollar number is not as substantial as four percent of a thirty million dollar number. And that's the important thing I wanna point out, is if we see three percent instead of four percent, you're only talking about seventy thousand dollars. So it, it, it's not as big as you would see on the other side, or on those other first two revenues. And, uh, real quick, cannabis and other taxes, kind of the, um, cannabis is the blue line with the kind of the lower three sets, the up and downside, and the forecast is the green line. Um, I won't focus on this too much, other than to say that we increased cannabis by about three hundred thousand dollars per year based on council action that was taken at the first meeting in, um, March. Um, all these other revenues, I actually have a few notes I wanted to point out. So licenses and permits is a lot of your development services, um, revenues. Um, a lot of your service charges, recreation-type charges fall, are, are in that category. Your fines and penalties, as I was talking about, um, around, um, some of those revenues. We're trying to kind of build in there for what we're seeing in terms of enforcement activities. Um, and then the other big one I wanted to point out was other government. This is actually where the safer grant is forecasted. You can see from year one to year two, that number drops. And that's because there will be less safer grant revenue available to us. Um, gas tran, gas tax transfer is just a transfer we receive from, from gas taxes.
Greg?
Yes.
Uh, councilman budget?
Um, on that previous slide, is that budgeted or is that actual?
This is all budgeted, yes.
So those are the budgeted number, the blue was the budgeted from the last budget.
From the last budget, yes.
Which is also almost exactly the same as the, what you're supposing for the next budget.
For the most part in this revenue area. Yeah, that's, I mean, it's a little up, as we talked about in areas like development services. You know, as, as we discussed with council, we're gonna make some modifications to how those fees are kind of formulated to c- collect more of the costs that we're incurring. Um, recreation's doing the same. So you are seeing some, in the macro, you are a hundred percent right. It is not a lot of money that we're assuming there for the, if you think about the entire general fund as about a hundred five to a hundred and ten million dollar revenue, that, the increases we're seeing here is less than a percent, right?
And I'm, I just have this overall concern that since the last two budgets, that the last biennial budget, so the two, it's one budget, but for two years, um, it's almost identical to the one that we are also considering. And we were so far upside down in those budgets. So when the revenues, I mean, there's, this isn't a huge difference. So when the revenues, I mean, there's, this isn't a huge difference. It just seems a little concerning.
You'll see, I have a slide at the very end.
Okay, okay.
It'll address some of your questions. I think I think your concern is valid. So I'm not trying to dismiss your concern. I I have a slide that probably does a good job of like summarizing the last budget compared to this budget. And so I'm hoping that'll help answer the question. And if it doesn't, we can certainly talk about it at that time. But there's been some pretty substantial expense reductions as well as part of this budget. Um, Bear, I don't think Barry alluded to it. He meant to, but his voice made him go quick. Um, we actually, as part of the budget development, we held every major general fund department's O and M at basically status quo, less five percent. It's a pretty drastic measure. It's going to have some pretty big consequences. I'll, I'm not to dwell on parks, but you know, Travis is already busy trying to figure out how do I better make better use of my utilities and my watering expenses, right, to water the areas that are important to park activities. And he could talk more about that, but that's just an example of the ramifications of that decision that we had to make frankly, to balance this budget is reducing those O and M expenses across the board. Miscellaneous transfers out, I'll point out the tourism contract is the first kind of set there on the left. These are ones that are negative because we they're transfers to other funds that pay those bills. So the bill for the tourism contract is actually paid out of our convention center fund because it used to be the convention center and tourism and we used to do all those services ourselves and we had a bunch of employees twenty five years ago. Well, now that contract still lives there and the general fund makes a transfer to cover that contract. As council knows, we reduce that contract based on council approval by three hundred fifty thousand dollars and that's kind of that first set of three. Um, the next one that I want to point out because I think it's very important because there is risk here is the rolling stock and other equipment. We substantially reduce these as part of this effort to balance this budget. It is fine in the short term. Those of you who were on council four or five years ago, we made a lot of strides in buying police and fire apparatus. Um, and that was a great thing and it used some of our reserves that we were building up. But I'll be honest with you, the reason we had to do that was because ten years before that, we cut these rolling stock numbers. And I want to point that out because while it helps your budget in the short term, there is a long term risk liability, future expense that will hit us at some point. Good news is we have pretty good fleet right now. I'm going to look at Barner because sometimes his guys aren't nice to our fleet. But um, right now we're in pretty good shape, but I do want to point that out to council because it does have some potential long term consequences. So now, I always do these kind of next few slides. One will be expenditures by type, meaning the different types of expenses, personnel, O and M, internal service fund charges or fixed charges is what we call them, capital and debt. And then the next one will be by function. And then the next one after that will be the discretionary budget by function. And so I'll go through these relatively quickly, but don't be afraid to stop me if you guys have any questions. This one I always like to point out, I don't know if I like to point out, but a lot of our general fund is personnel. We have a council policy around the level at which a previous council decided we shouldn't go above. This budget will stay below that. That threshold is seventy three percent. As you can see on the on the graphs here, both years we are below that threshold, sixty nine and seventy one percent. But it's just the reality that seventy percent, almost every year of our budget is personnel. I think within a percent or two, it's always right around there. And so I want to point that out to council first and foremost. And like I said, I I like to brag on maybe it's this council, maybe it's previous councils, but we've we've stayed in a very good position with our debt. Having only, you know, in year two, one percent of your budget is debt is is a good position to be in. A lot of cities have much more debt payments than that as a percent of their budget. Um, so expenses, expenses by function, sorry, this is taking their total budgets and just saying what percent of the general fund is each of those budgets. And so as I pointed out, a good one that on the next slide you're going to see go away is public works because they have revenues, they have cross charges that fully pay for themselves. And so you'll see public works, which is the light blue, is twelve percent of our budget in total. But they're really zero percent of our discretionary budget because they have gas taxes that pay for most of those services. General government also goes away because those are effectively internal service fund charges that are in the form of being in the general fund, but they're really just providing services to all of these other departments. And so you'll see some of those drop off on the next slide. But uh, you know, the one that always gets the attention, and so I'm going to point it out is police and fire in year one, police and fire sixty four percent of the total budget. In year two, they're sixty five percent. This one right here, um, so you can see total budget and discretionary budget right there. This isn't the slide I was talking about to NASA that that'll be the, I believe, the next one. But I I like to talk about those differences because there's things we're saying, hey, this is a dedicated revenue source. If council made this cut, it would not actually save the general fund any money. So we have to be careful to talk about that slightly different and or council can't really get rid of it. Use debt payments as an example. We issued a bond. We have to be good to our word. We ha- so debt is not a discretionary item of council. Frankly, unfunded liability is not a discretionary item of council. If we have one police officer or a hundred and fourteen police officers, we're going to still going to pay that unfunded liability because it's the not the cost of the current employees. It's the cost of the plan, which means all your past promises up to this date. Um, and frankly, if you wanted to opt out of Calpers, it would be even a even bigger number than the unfunded liability payment. So I don't even want to go down that path. But so we kind of distill this into a discretionary budget to try to get a better sense of where can we make cuts that have a direct impact and and you know, that are like dollar for dollar. And so the police budget, there, police is about fifty two percent of the discretionary budget in year one and year two. Fire is thirty one and thirty two percent of the discretionary budget. And then um, community services, parks, recreation, sports park, even though it's net zero and aquatic center are nine percent. So between those three categories, you're talking about ninety two percent and ninety three percent of our discretionary budget. So when we talk about cuts, it's not because we want to pick on those departments. It's because it's most of where you can save money from the general fund and actually make a quick quicker impact. Not to say you can't do it other ways. There are other ways to do it. You could cut internal service funds, but that now means you could cut general government, but that now means less services provided to those departments for those functions that they are really yearning for anyways, i.e. RU would get less fleet services if we went and cut fleet's budget. So this was my previously alluded to slide that I hope does a good job of uh, kind of summarizing our budget. As you can see, the FY twenty five adopted or last updated amended budget, ten year plan was almost a hundred and six million of revenues. Twenty twenty six, I wanted to add that here. So this is the previous ten year plan, even though it wasn't an adopted budget by council. The previous ten year plan had certain assumptions in twenty twenty six. Previous ten year plan had about a hundred and nine million dollars of revenue. As you can see there, the first year has a slight increase in revenues, which I think is to Tennesse's point. The second year sees a larger increase in revenues with those assumptions kind of going that first year. So that's why we will all need to keep a keen eye on what's happening with our revenues. Um, there is upside and there is downside to all of them. And then, as you can see, the expenses, so in FY twenty five, which is the current fiscal year we're in, have a hundred and eleven million, one one eleven point two. So that's a five point three million dollar deficit. And then in your FY twenty six there, you can see one oh eight point nine compared to one fourteen point two. On the previous ten year plan, well, it was a five point three million dollar deficit. Now we're bringing to council this budget that I just summarized. I think it took a while, but I'm doing my best. Is saying, hey, we're going to spend a hundred and seven point five million. So that's really where the changes have occurred is in on the expenditure side. Doing, um, being very diligent with our O and M, we we have had to reduce some positions across various city departments. And then, as you can see there, there are also assumed increases that you have to account for when you're building your personnel budget and your O and M budget that obviously causes to increase in year two. Year one, we have about a two million dollar surplus. In year two, it's a lot tighter and that's why I will continue to kind of beat the drum and do my best at the quarterly updates to remind council how we're tracking against that result. And I and I do know through conversations with Barry that both he and I are going to be hyper diligent and constantly communicating about how expenses are tracking and and or do we need to make more modifications as a result? And with that, we're both available for questions. I appreciate your time. I don't know how long that took, but it felt like it took a while.
Let's go through our speakers first, then we'll come back. Leslie Sawyer and Jim Giacometti.
Thank you, Greg, by the way.
So maybe we should have asked the rodeo people to stay so they would know what was going on. In the sixties, Senate leader Everett McKinley Dirksen cautioned when discussing federal spending, a billion here, a billion there, and pretty soon you're talking real money. That was federal government spending and way before today's climate. We elected you, the council, to vote for fiscally responsible directions, not to rubber stamp. I took the time to look into the budget over the last five years. There's a lot missing that was rubber stamped, which put us where we're at now. There was a huge increase in projections about two, three years ago that didn't really have any explanation. There have been hiring freezes and cuts to public safety. And there's some discrepancies in the reservation or in the reserves in cash that don't make sense to many people who have reviewed it. A thousand here, a cop there, thirty two million there, nine million here, a firefighter there. Now we're talking a whole lot of local money. We elected you. This team over here, that was a well-prepared demonstration of kind of fluffy numbers, but this team answers to you. Not the other way around. I'm asking you, the five council members who we elected, to take the time, not approve this as it is, but ask the questions, look at the numbers. As it sits, send those who played with the numbers and gave you incomplete packets because they're incomplete. I looked at them. Back to their desks to the do the work and bring back complete and transparent numbers. Oh, and after Tennesse's radio thing, when she got a little bit of heat from some people here, I saw at least three times in the stuff provided to you guys where ARPA funds were in the reserves. So um, it's very easy to see where there was increase in sales tax when we all got free money for covid. That didn't just come out of nowhere and then go away miraculously. That was free money people were spending like it's free money, even though we all know nothing's free. So we can't make projections based off of that and then say, oh, no, I wonder how we got here. So there's just a lot of gaps. There's a lot of unanswered questions. And as the people we elected to ask those questions, please remember this team is well-meaning as they are or could be or whatever, they answer to you, not the other way around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim?
Well, thank you. Thank you for this time, City Council. I'm speaking here tonight on the behalf of Sons and Daughters of Italy who utilizes South City Park. And I found out over the weekend and I made verified it yesterday with Travis during a phone call that the park is going to be basically the water is going to be turned off to the park other than for the restrooms and to the Colt forty five part of the facility. So that the trees will be watered by hand over there. Um, and and why I'm concerned about that, and there's other parks that are going to be have this same type of situation under this new budget. Is we have an annual event that we host over there in September every year that we've moved up here from Anderson in twenty fifteen. And to have no grass over there and basically drought restrictions at that park. Where you can't hold an event there for that with that kind of atmosphere. So with the last couple of years of record rains and and we're going to take the parks, certain parks that aren't utilized um, and turn them into drought restriction facilities concerns me. Um, I think there's going to be tree loss and there's going to be other things that happen with that. So I would ask that, I don't know what amount of money is going to be saved. It can't be a whole lot of money by stopping the water versus a a big budget like this. But I would ask that the city council would fine tune, you know, fine tune this this budget to where we don't have our parks that look, you know, rundown, uh, that we maintain services. And we want a beautiful city and we don't need to be in drought restrictions when we've had two record years of of rain. And I know it costs money, but to pump water, whatever you're going to save doing this is just going to affect the RU budget. Because that's part of this water, doesn't the water and power part of their program? So so just please consider that. Um, we are, we're already planning for our September event. We were kind of caught off guard about this. We've bought supplies. We we may not have the event there this year if if that is what happens to that park. And I know that it's going to be under full construction in a couple, you know, year or two years from now. And we can accommodate that, but to be blindsided with the these conditions was shocking. So thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Councilmember Dinuka.
Can you, Travis or someone can tell us, uh, how much is this going to save? And what's the reason for shutting that down? I'm kind of hurted, but just if you can just explain.
Well, maybe I'll have Travis come up and talk to it, but it's it's quite expensive to water, right? So I think Travis has some basic numbers.
Thank you, Barry. Uh, thank you, council. I have extensive numbers. So I don't have the numbers specifically for South City, but we did a detailed analysis of all of our water use in areas where we could make adjustments. And so looking at some average park costs, Benton Dog Park, I would say there's much less grass at Benton Dog Park than South City Park. That's twelve thousand dollars a year. So it's actually a pretty substantial number. So looking at all of our watering, uh, our water that we use, we have to be able to make some restrictions and they have to be self-imposed in this case because our utilities budget is going to have to take a hit as part of this this next budget cycle. So it could be anywhere between, I'd say that twelve thousand dollar number to twenty thousand dollars. We also pay Tiger Field Utilities out of that same pot of money and they're all married in the same water meter. So but what we did do is we're proposing substantial water meter changes, which will actually be ongoing savings uh, between twenty and thirty thousand dollars, up to forty thousand dollars if we keep going with other parks. So those will be ongoing savings that we can actually roll forward from this budget.
Can you just explain why did you choose South City Water, South City Park over other parks?
So.
I know, I know the reason. I just want to know.
It's not necessarily that it's going to be South City. It's that we have to look at all of the options. Because there is actually a project to redo South City Park, it would be wise to look at that as something that we could avoid the expense this year. We are committing to work with their event and and trying to help out where we can. And actually, the community stepped up to be able to uh, hopefully get us some funds to be able to to supplement that water out there. But it's not necessarily that it was picked. It's just that that park is going to be redone. And so it may be wise to save the money this year and then invest next year with that project.
Thank you.
Thanks, Travis. Vice Mayor Latah.
Travis, that was my only comment there. I understand the assumption of turning off the water, the park's going to get renovated and make good sense of the money. But perhaps you can get together with them and find an alternate park or place just that you already addressed that and said that. So thank you.
Thank you.
A motion? Anybody else? Well, I don't hear anybody's name up here. Councilmember Rade.
Can you pull up the the last slide?
Can you pull up the last slide? Is that actuals for '25 or is that the budget?
That's the budget.
That's the budget.
So when we talk about budgets, when you talk about actuals or amended budgets, comparing it to a budget can be challenging because actuals include carryovers. There's a lot of carryovers that happen. It includes frankly, things like ARPA, which are one-time monies that you budget for one time and then you carry them over. So, so when you look at actuals, it's going to be much higher sometime, and sometimes maybe even as much as $10 million higher. So it doesn't give you a good sense of the decision on this budget, if that makes sense. And so I believe it makes more sense to try to compare an adopted budget to a recommended budget as opposed to looking at actuals. We certainly can, you know, I could pull up actuals for a number of years, given enough time, and have a whole chart of actuals, but it would look much higher because you have these carryovers that happen year to year.
Okay, so, but that's just the budgeted number. It's not a national number. Okay, so I just wanted to make sure what I'm looking at. So my concern on approving this budget is the fact that it assumes, well, it assumes a surplus, which I have not ever seen in any of the budgets, except for one year where our revenues exceeded our expenses, and that was in 2021. And that, according to the audit, was because the state withheld sales taxes in 2020 because of COVID and then released them all in '21. And so we had this huge boom of sales tax because they had withheld the COVID money in that later part of that year, which went down 20%. And then it spiked back up in '21 because you got effectively eighteen months of sales tax. So I have never seen a budget where we are actually doing, I mean, this sounds fantastic, but I've actually never historically seen our revenues exceed our expenses other than that anomaly. So I'm, I'm incredibly skeptical to think that it's going to be even possible for us to have our revenues exceed our expenses because I've just not seen it historically. In addition, we've, we have spent a lot and I, the actual is important in to understanding how the budget's working. And if my, if, if I'm in debt at my house and I have credit card debts and I need to look at my budget, I do need to look at what I spent the year before to see where I can start cutting and what I can do to change my fixed costs. And it just seems like I haven't, I don't feel like, I do understand cutting cops is a, and fire is an easier place to start. But I also don't think we really have this muscle. I think having these cuts and being way more conservative about what we think that that's going to be the first time we're trying to make such significant cuts, I think would be wiser than to think that not only are we going to cut, but we're going to bring in more money that we have no control over, but we're really going to spend and be really tight. I, I wish that we had done this last year and had understood exactly what was happening. But on the issue of actuals, it's, it's actually incredibly important to be able to be checking where we're at. And I know I haven't gotten those actuals since September of 2023. So I've been asking for them and I know that I haven't received.
Just not to interrupt, the actuals are in the quarterly update staff reports. They are not the same as they were in 2023 because we're in a new system. And I, I've made that comment to council that the reports don't look the same. We're willing to make any changes that council desires to those reports, but they are certainly there. To act like they are not there is, is a little false.
Oh, so let's be specific then. So the actual reports that I'm talking about, because this isn't, I'm not saying you're not putting numbers in, but there's like, for the reports that I've been looking for, I, I have the last six quarterlies and mid-cycles and, and the work from September of '23 was fantastic. It was, it was just easy to see, like, are we behind? It would have percentages to tell you like, hey, your, your, your mid-year, you guys are like 50% there. So you can kind of see like, are we going too far over here for all the things that you're saying would be awesome to have? I totally agree. They would be awesome to have, to really keep understanding where we are in the budget and how we're moving through. I think it's actually critical to understand that for, to know how much we're spending, to know how much things are costing, to keep a real tight rein on that budget. I think that that's exactly what's needed and, and what was provided before. So when we, when I talk about that, the difference is an actual report. There's four, four reports. It's actual revenue compared to cash flow estimates, comparative summary of actual revenues, it's the actual, actual expenditures compared to cash flow estimates, and it's line item so that you can see just those aspects. And especially when you're new to the council, like really learning where our revenues coming from, what's being affected, you know, we get questions all the time about how are we spending money? This would actually tell you because it has line items. It's really understanding the business that you're in. And it's super valuable as a council member to just understand how the budget is working because ultimately we are responsible and for how much we have spent in the deficit, I don't know if this, does this end, are we going to end at 5.3 million in a deficit? Are we? We're not sure yet. That was just the budget?
Yeah, that's the most recent amended budget.
Yeah, so for the 10-year, if, if we were negative seven-six last year and negative five-three this year, I mean, we, we went deep into our reserves. And I think having, if we had had this, we could have, I think, caught that or been able to just see like where it is that this is happening and to understand it better. But for the last year and a half to not have any of these reports, I think has been very detrimental in us understanding what was going on. And I don't want to go into that again. I would love to have those types of reports again. Cash flow budget reports, I'm sure, you know, you, you prepared these. So I mean, having something similar to this, I think would be super advantageous and helpful to make sure that we understand. But because this is not a muscle we have, we haven't been doing this. We haven't been cutting, we haven't been really minding our Ps and Qs. And so we're assuming the best of revenue and we are assuming that we're going to know how to rein that in, especially when costs from inflation or trade wars or whatever else is going on in the world. I just, it would seem more prudent that we are going to, that we would be more responsible. And then I'm confused how we even in the 10-year project out and not go into negatives. Do you have a, a 10-year for us to look at?
I don't currently have a 10-year plan. That's what I was alluding to. New system, so some, some of what happened here is not any desire other than there was a direction made multiple years before 2024, way before we ever saw these financial difficulties, to switch our systems. To switch our systems, finance had no new staff to do that. And I'm not saying woe is us, but it is an incredibly big lift. And everybody in my department, some people that have left can attest to that. And so we are in the process of trying to make every report what it was and/or better. So it, it was no intentional thing. It just so happened that this aligned with the same year that we went live with a new system.
When was that?
We went live with a new system on July 1st, 2023. We met our go-live date as a staff with no additional positions. Actually, we were down positions through the go-live. So it is incredibly hard to pull this off. And I'm not trying to say woe is us. I'm just trying to provide context to a statement you made that seems like you think we did this intentionally.
No, no, this is just a statement of fact. We just haven't had these reports. And it's been two years, so I'm not sure we can keep calling it new if it's been two years. And we spent $13 million in reserves and I was not aware of that. And so I, I want to take responsibility for that. I've been digging into this to figure out, how did I miss that we spent $13 million in reserves in two years? I didn't understand that. So I'm, I want to take responsibility for not being aware of that and solve this problem. And as I'm looking through, I'm finding that the older reports just had a lot more information. And as I'm trying to read through the ports, I'm not understanding them. I'm not, I'm, I'm unaware and I'm looking for some actuals to figure out how to, how, what would be a smart and a prudent and a wise new budget? What would, what would make sense? And looking at projections, I think being extremely conservative would only be to our benefit. I, I don't see the, I don't see the drawback of not choosing the most conservative route when we've just come out of not making the best decisions as far as projections. So if we're going to shift and, and figure out a better way to do this, I think it's going to be really important that we choose the most conservative route. And honestly, I still don't even know the actuals for '24. It's my very first biennial budget. It was my very first one and I want to see how it did. And I, I haven't seen any actuals for 2024. And I would love to be able to see those, to understand where we overspent, where we underspent, what those things are, how this new budget is going to change and in what ways. It's just very hard with the information that we have to feel like I have enough information that, that I would be okay with choosing to think that revenues for the first time ever are going to exceed our expenses, especially since we're going back to even less cops than we had before. So that, that is hard for me to, to wrap my brain around. I, I just, I think a more conservative approach would be prudent.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rezzer?
I was just wondering whether or not that was, there was a motion there or if you were just making a request for what you would like to see in the future.
Um, I mean, I really think we could have used the April workshop. I think, I haven't seen a 10-year. I, I think diving into, because we don't have a two-year problem. We have a, a one-year problem, a two-year problem, a three, we have a, we, the whole budget is busted. And I don't know that we, the plan that we're, this is a hopeful plan. I don't think that this is a responsible and prudent plan. And so I would like to get us there. I think that, I wish we would not have canceled the April 17th committee workshop for this. And I think there needs to be more time into this because I, this is wishful thinking. It's not even historic. So I, I, I don't know what indication we have that this would be realistic. You know what I mean?
So.
No, she's not making a motion.
I would, I, I think I would make a motion that we would need to continue to workshop.
I mean, we have to, we need to adopt something by June, so my.
By July or like end of June, June 30th?
Right.
Or do we? Do we have to have our budget by July?
Yeah, you have to have expenditure plan approved by July 1st.
Just the expenditures?
Well, that's technically what you're approving. You should approve the revenues with it, of course.
How long would it take? If I'm doing napkin math, so please forgive me because I'm not an accountant. If we were to say to reduce revenue expectations or projections by another percent, I'm thinking that that's 1.1 million roughly. And if we said by half a percent, that that's a little over half a million dollars or so, if I'm doing this math correctly. I, prior to this meeting, I would have said that I felt comfortable with the, with the direction that we were going and, and I would have said previously that I felt like that we were making really conservative assumptions. Sitting through today's presentation, I have reservations about whether or not we are being conservative enough. As a member of the council who was here when we were able to put away money in reserves and to get us to a good standing, it makes me really nervous that I remember those conversations of, of increasing our, of what we felt like the bottom should be in reserves. And so it makes me really nervous to not have much in reserves at this point in time. And I think that the, I'm going to make assumptions for the previous council. I think that the previous council likely thought that there would be a change in administration and things would feel differently. However, they don't really feel that different economically and in people's pockets. So I think that we may continue to see the same things that we have been seeing for the last two years. And so I am really concerned about the 2.5%. And I would like to probably consider reducing that more. I understand that that puts a heavy load on staff, but after looking at today's numbers, I think that I would like to at least decrease them by a half a percent in revenue.
All right, let's let, Vice Mayor Lutal.
Yeah, I, I think we're all concerned and I think being concerned means we care. So that's good. It's good that we're looking at all this. I, I really enjoyed looking at the budget. I mean, this is new for me being on the council. I've been here, it's a learning process. And what I did, because I'm really geeky about numbers and the process, I just really, really wanted to learn. I went back and watched probably about 30 hours of budget meetings over the past three or four years. I really wanted to just go back and get a pulse of what's going on now, what happened three, four years ago, listening to feedback of former council members, council members that are also here, because there was a lot of decisions made. And it was really cool just to watch all that video in, in a short week because it really told a big story. It's like reading a novel and a story, like really, really quickly. One thing I really, really appreciate watching all the budget meetings over the past three or four years is my takeaway was I felt like finance and our city manager was very, very transparent with the budget going back three or four years ago. Starting back in 2022, we, we had a huge surplus. It was, it was something right around 20, 22 million dollars. We were in a really, really good cash position. We had all this ARPA money that we could spend, which is of course one-time money that we had a, a budget and spend by a certain timeframe. And so there was a lot of optimism at that time to be able to do a lot of the things that the community was telling us they wanted. They wanted more police officers, they wanted more firefighters. We were concerned about public safety and the council was in just such a great, great position at that time to be able to make some great decisions. Now, the revenue stream, what I was learning in 2022 and '23, the revenue, incoming revenue, it was not enough to be able to pay to hire for the police officers and the firefighters. It, it wasn't quite there yet. But the plan of the council back in 2022 and '23 was, let's take our reserves right here and all this ARPA money. We are going to do planned deficit spending over the next two or three years. We're going to advance hiring the police officers, the firefighters, and that's going to put us ahead and address what the community is telling us what they want. And there was optimism that going into '25, '26, '27, the revenue streams of sales tax and property tax was actually going to increase and it was going to get us to a level where we could afford all these positions, but at least we could provide valuable services to the community over a course of '22, '23, and '24. So it was really great times. However, what was very transparent by the finance and the city manager was, hey, we're seeing a little downward trend in sales tax. We're, we're slightly concerned, but every time we've seen a rebound in the economy, every single time there's been a rebound in sales tax. So we're cautiously optimistic that that is going to come back, but we want to start cautioning you now. And that goes all the way back to 2022. They were very transparent. They were very, very clear with us. Going into future budget meetings in '23, they were becoming a little bit more strong and saying, hey, we're even more concerned, you know, sales taxes continuing to decline and we're not quite getting that rebound. We think we should keep the course and that's what all the council members were telling us in the past. We want to stay the course. We want to hire. We want to invest in this community. We believe it's still going to come back better. But they prepared us, or they prepared the former council and said, you should be prepared that we may have to make some painful cuts in '25 and '26. This may come. We still think we could rebound out of this, but we're even more concerned. Fast forward, what we're doing here is we're just following the plan of what the council did in '22 and '23 and said, we want to advance all this hiring, but be prepared for some painful cuts. We're here. We're here. We're actually, we're, we're doing that. We're, we're cutting part of our police and fire. It's not fun. We want more police. We want more firefighters. We want public safety to improve, but we're just following the plan. The revenue stream didn't rebound as, as anticipated, but they told us it might not, right? So we're here. We spent millions of dollars in ARPA money. We brought down our reserves down to a point where we're very, just super concerned about. But that was planned. That was planned deficit spending. The council said we're going to do this. Okay, so we shouldn't be too panicked that they, they spent millions of dollars. But here we are. We got to balance the budget. We got to prepare for the future and that's exactly what we're doing. I, I share your concern saying, hey, I don't mind if sales tax, our assumption comes down a half percent. I think we can find a way to do that. And maybe that allows us a chance to get a little bit more skinny. But I'm optimistic. We're not going to be here forever. Things are going to rebound in the future. Sales tax is going to come back. Property tax is going to continue to increase. We're going to have a rebound. This is not doom and gloom forever. The council was very optimistic three or four years ago because we could be at that time. Things were really, really good and we're going to get back there. And this is just tough time. We're, we're going to work through it. I'm new to the council, but I'm here. I'm, I'm here to help work through this and I really, really enjoyed learning. I think everybody would just find a wealth of information to go back and study and watch all these budget meetings instead of coming to your own assumptions out there and saying the council and the city manager and the finances did a terrible job and they misled us. That's not accurate. Go back and watch all the budget meetings over. Go back and watch all the budget meetings over the past three or four years. We're following the plan that was laid out in front of us. They were very transparent and, um, I feel very comfortable with the direction we're going and maybe we just make a slight change, that's my comment.
Well, I can, I have, I might have told somebody, I don't know. I've met with Barry probably 150 times in the last, you know, two and a half years. Greg, I met with him probably 60 times. You know, as being a retired policeman, I was never, um, I don't think I would classify myself as a great investigator, but I was a good investigator and I have some skills in discernment, some skills when interviewing and talking to people. And never, um, have I felt like, never, that Barry or Greg were being deceitful or trying to do something that they shouldn't be doing. So I commend you for that and I'm, I'm grateful to have you guys in those positions. But I also say this is a, this is not the final say. We could approve this and move it forward and probably have Greg come back, with a half a percent decline of whatever. Is that, would that be something that's possible or workable?
Do you want one year of half a percent or multiple years? Do we want to go down to 2% for all year?
One year. I hope. Because I already have that number, I can give that number right now.
He can give that number.
Somebody unmuted me.
So.
Hold on. Go ahead, Yann, are you finished?
I didn't have, I.
Okay. Go ahead, Greg.
Give it to me for me. No, it's all right, I didn't unmute myself the first time, I deserve it. So the difference if we were, eh, what I heard was, hey, what is the ramification of being a little more conservative on just sales tax? If I'm misinterpreting that and you're wanting to do it with all revenues, I can, eh, take me a second longer. But I went ahead and popped my computer up and it's running low on battery, next time I'll bring my charger. But it, it would be about $154,000 difference a year for us to reduce that.
You should have a workshop.
For one year.
Um, I just.
Hold on guys. Councilmember Dino.
I have a couple of questions before I actually say something further. Can you give us a little bit of idea, what was the actual revenue for the whole financial year? Whether you have it for the last year or this year? This year is incomplete, for the last year, what was the actual revenue and expense? And I'm guessing this is on accrual basis or cash basis accounting? If you can clarify that the actual revenue and expense.
Barry has, I think, the 2024 staff report, so this would be cash basis.
Cash basis, okay.
Yes.
So tw, this is 23 to 24, right, July to July?
Yeah, so from a cash basis, um, our revenues last year, um, would have been 96.6 million and our expenses would have been about 111.9.
Okay. So what I see from that is, two things I see. One is that your expenses are actually, what you're proposing is less than the previous year.
Yes, sir.
That kind of answers, Tennessee, our question of actual expenses versus the expenses proposed now are less by around three, four million or so, four million or so. So that's definitely a responsible thing to do. The problem we have is actually, we do not have a printing press like the federal government.
Correct.
Nor do we have the taxing authority.
Correct.
Just on the basis of our whim, like a federal government or a state government. So what we're really doing here is, what we're really trying to do is, just like a family, we are trying to balance our budget, do our best. And everyone is trying to say, hey, we cut this or not cut this and we, it sometimes hurts us, sometimes we like it. So I would like everyone to keep in mind that we're really not fighting over something which we have much control over. And what we really need to focus on is how do we make the pie bigger, rather than fighting over a piece of pie? And the reason I say that is, I, I'm really admire you guys to try to figure out how to really reduce expenses. Of course, everyone wants everything, but something which everyone has to pay. And where is the money going to come from? I mean, I run a business and if I have my expenses over the revenue, I take home money less than what I make. So city can't do that because ultimately public has to fund the bills. Now, coming to the point of 2% versus 2.5%, if you guys may recall, I actually had suggested that we take a 2% projection for the sales revenue, sales tax revenue increase. Because my expectation was we are going to see the, say, less sales tax than what we expected. So I had actually suggested 2%, but I was okay with the 2.5% also. The reason I, but I don't think it makes much difference because what really matters is what our expenses are. So I hear you, what you're saying that, hey, can we reduce our revenue by 0.5% or even 1%? I don't think it will make a huge difference in our expenses planning. So that's one thing I would say. The other thing I would like to say, point out is that what Leslie had mentioned earlier, we need to be cautious about how we increase our expenses or how we increase our budgets. But at the same time, we need to also be careful that we do not cut the services so much that it may become difficult to recreate that. For example, if a grass dies, then you have more expenses of bringing it back. The same applies to our city also. So we have to be very cautious not to cut it too much also. I do find that current efforts by the city manager and everyone, the finance department, you're taking a very prudent, cautious line. So we can tweak with it a little bit between now and July. But I'm not sure that changing in the revenue projection will actually change much in this situation. But I'm open to that, if you want to bring it back with that.
Councilmember Ode.
Well, I appreciate all the optimism. You did run on being fun. But the, we did not plan to spend $13 million in our rev, in our, um, reserves. We were told it was 4 million. So that was the structural deficit that we had planned to spend was four. So it was quite a shock to find out a couple of weeks ago that it was actually 13 million that we had spent in this biennial budget, just in our, basically our savings, our savings account. So that was kind of a shock to the system. And knowing and having gone through and, and thinking I understood what was happening and, and understood what was, what was going on, but then realizing when I go to look back, why I missed it and not actually having the numbers to, to understand that fully. I will say, the fact is, is that the decisions that were made, largely the largest expense we have is personnel. And so far, we've chosen not to cut people. We've, we've cut O and M, which is great, but we've really not made those tough decisions on the same thing they did in 2019, where they renegotiated MOUs with people and they really figured out, how are we going to change this budget over time? Because the needs, you know, of the community are not to have all of the parks go out. Like, it, it has to be a shared burden. And so we haven't even discussed that. Instead, we're having wishful thinking again, which I think got, had got us into trouble in the past. It's wishful thinking to think that our revenues are going to exceed our expenses. It's wis, it's wishful thinking. We can't control revenues. So if we are balancing this budget on the back of the thing we absolutely cannot control, I don't think that that is fiscally sound or responsible. The one thing that we can control are the expenses. And if we spent 111 million dollars last year and the recommended budget now is 107,000, you know, I don't know, I don't know if that does, if that's enough. And I, and I also don't know, because we go right back up to an, another 111, I don't know. And I don't know that I have enough information of the actuals, of all of what's happened over the last year, um, and the year before, to be able to say, yeah, this feels like we've, we've done it for the full 10-year. Because does this even get us into the whole 10-year? Does, does this modification give us over 10% in reserves for the full 10-year report?
It's unknown right now. We haven't analyzed the rest of the years. And what Greg said is, we're, uh, if we, uh, look at the out years, what we would be trying to do is making sure we can maintain the public safety, positions that have been identified as grant-funded for now. And so that's the next step, based on what the council tells us tonight, is to figure out the rest of the tenure plan.
Yeah, the hard part about the, the, I, what do we have, two positions still from ARPA? For the police?
Fund, funded.
Funded? Is it just two, the park rangers? Is four park rangers?
It's all four, yeah.
For two years, for two more years?
It's about a year and a half.
A year and a half. Which, which we will be paying their pension stuff because it doesn't pay for that.
It does.
ARPA pays for pensions?
It's part of the cost of the employee. Pays for any cost of the employee.
Our ARPA funds can pay for pensions?
So ARPA cannot pay for payments on pension liability. It can pay for, there, there's, there's a cost associated to the employee that is a pension cost and it will cover that. Eh, it's a, it's a benefit. It's just like if we had contributed to a 401K, right? But it, you're not, you weren't allowed with ARPA to take the 18 million and pay down your pension debt. That's what you were not allowed to do.
Gotcha.
And we did not do that.
Gotcha. So I think, um, we're going to have added costs coming, is what that means. We have about a year and a half and we have added costs. So I think we may think that this is actually going to get us where we need to be. But when you, if we know right now we're 5 million in the hole with that 10-year plan, year over year, I think we only had three years before we were like negative. So I don't know that that's even going to get us there. And I think we should workshop with a 10-year plan, understanding that we don't get to just do a one, a two-year. We have to figure this out in the long run because, again, it can't just be wishful thinking. I think that's what got us into trouble. And I, I feel like as wishful as I would like to be, I feel like we need to be realistic and fiscally responsible. And that means, you know, figuring out what those hard decisions are and having a plan.
It seems to me that we're, you're speculating in one way and we're speculating the other way.
Yeah, I'm speculating in the conservative way, yeah.
We don't know the future. So, I mean, these numbers could be spot on. And they could be spot off, we just don't know the answer to that. I'm saying we move forward and then we can adjust in the next six weeks with Greg and what she's talking about.
So one of the other issues we have is.
Hold on, let me, let me, I'll, I'll re-rum myself, I'll start with, uh, oh. Councilmember Brezmer. And I'll get back to you.
Being that police and fire take up a majority of the personnel expenses and the general fund and the amount that's discretionary, are you suggesting that we open up MOU discussions with our POA?
Yes. I think any and all. I mean, there was pretty substantial, yeah, we have to, everything should have to get looked at. I don't even have, I mean, we should be seeing what all, all of the raises that happened over 22 and 23. We should at least look at them to see if there's any room at all to make real structural change to the budget. Because I, even if you approve this, I don't think it's going to pencil out in the tenure. So we're going to be right back to having to figure that out with less time. And so understanding that this is compounding, that tenure is going to look pretty, I think it's going to look bad. And so if we don't sit down while we can in the next two months to really look at this and figure out what needs to be changed and where, where things can happen and what is it going to be? You know, even if you take the most conservative route and, and, or, I mean, we're breaking council policy as it is. We are below the 10%. We don't have a plan, we have a short-term plan that looks like we're wishing that revenues come in higher.
I don't disagree with that, I just would like to bring it back to remember, remember the time when you said you weren't willing to discuss police and fire cuts?
Of course we did, we lost 12 and nine, I was totally fine with that. We've been talking about 12 and nine for a long time. I didn't want to lose another three, I didn't understand, I really didn't understand. And again, I have not had an actual budget since September of 2023 to understand what our actuals are and where we financially really are. And so I honestly, I thought we were, it was $480,000 on the screen. I thought surely we could find $480,000. We've already lost 12 and nine. But, I mean, my understanding now is that we are, we took out way more out of our reserves than what I knew we were doing. And not only are we not going to be able to have what we want as far as what you guys worked so hard on in 2018 and 2019, you know, to, to build, but we probably have to going to cut other things as well. Or at least look at them. I mean, let's just make a conscious decision. Okay, well, we know what we're doing, we are, we are going to go lean on grass and on this kind of stuff for one year and then we have to reevaluate. Or, but I don't, wishing that we make more revenues and expenses is, feels so irresponsible. That ha, tho, those numbers have to align to reality. You know what I mean? If those were reversed, it would be more compelling. But to say that we're going to make more money than we spend is never happened. And I just, I think that's incredibly, um, unrealistic.
Um, of the 109 million in, in revenue, the amount in which that is speculative, I mean, I suppose all of it is speculative. But of that amount, is it purely just sales tax and property tax? Um, the rest of it is mostly fees?
Eh, even fees are speculative, if we're being honest. I mean, like, I, I'm not trying to like belabor the point.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And I also just, eh, I'll caution you, where, I don't, cuts to revenue means we need more cuts to expenses. So I, I'm not sure, you know, if we're saying this is unrealistic, it just means that we're going to lower our revenues and lower our expenses. So it just means more ramifications to cut to services. We can certainly do that. We can provide that plan, we can provide that alternative plan. To, to speak to the tenure plan a little bit, I've been working with the tenure plan for a long time. So I feel like I have a pretty good gut instinct to where the tenure plan will be at. And my gut instinct to where the tenure plan will be at is it'll be very difficult to afford both the four park ranger positions and, um, the firefighter positions that are rolling off as safer without, uh, negative ramifications to our tenure plan. I'm not saying it's impossible.
No, I agree.
I'm just saying, I think it would be very difficult.
I 100% agree. This assumes a 13 million, 13 million dollars more in revenue than we had last year. 13 million more. So, I mean, it's just.
Wait, how did you get to that number from budgeted 105 to 109?
No, it was 96.6 million, he gave us the actual, 96.6 million.
Yeah, so the, last year the actuals were 96.6 million. Remember, there's a lot of volatility in grants. But when they come in, timing of when they come in, i.e., today we got $300,000 of grant revenue from three years ago. And so, so there is some difficulty when you're talking, again, I don't want to say this is difficulty, but it's challenging when you're talking about a revenue that you spent the money five years ago, six years ago.
Yeah, government and nonprofit spending is very different.
We have all kinds of, we have all kinds of timing issues with those revenues at times. $300,000 just came in today to the general fund that was spent years ago.
Do you have 10 million in the wings and you're not telling us that could possibly be coming in?
I'm, I'm saying that there certainly can be fluctuations year to year in actual both expense and revenue. The expenses in this year would certainly, um, I'd have to go work up the number, that would not be a quick number to know exactly the amount of ARPA we spent out of this 111 million. But there certainly was a lot of ARPA because there's a requirement to get it spent. So there's a lot of ARPA activity happening in that 111, which I'll caution, it's just an example of where you have money in expense. You don't, you're not going to have a revenue for it because the revenues came in before. But we do an accounting mechanism to hold that separately from our general fund cash.
All right. Vice Mayor Littal.
Well, eh, eh, most of our discretionary money is police and fire, right? And so, um, you think about the, where we're have, already having a hard time recruiting police, right? Because, um, you're trying to be competitive in the market. So going back and negotiating with the union, sounds great, but like, they make less, it makes it harder to, of course, compete. I, I would value, um, quality, you know, over quantity as well. Um, we, we've heard the police chief say that, um, we can provide a good level of service with what we have right here. So I, I'd be cautious of that. But the comment that Greg made earlier was, uh, we'll, we'll have to adjust and make faster changes. If the, a property tax comes in, which is coming in in a few weeks, and our sales tax, uh, true-up is coming in in a few weeks, that's going to give us a good pulse, um, going into next budget meetings in June. Uh, we're going to have some really, really good data from that. And if it comes in really, really poor or below expectation, you know, um, I fully expect we'll have to make some adjustments and make some more rapid-fire adjustments, do it a little quicker, and keep things balanced. So that's just my take on that, I'm anxious to see what the data looks like in a couple of weeks. It doesn't mean that, if the data is very, very good in two weeks.
It doesn't mean if the data is very, very good in two weeks, it's gonna be great in six months because it is always evolving. Our budget is, uh, our budget is a guess for the future. It's, it's, it's what we think is gonna happen. Uh, we try to stay true to that and, um, stay tight within our budget as far as, you know, what's being spent and ask every department to, uh, uh, stay as true as you can to that. But, yeah, sure, I could be a little optimistic, but, um, there is gonna be a rebound in the future. But I, 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 it sounds like when I'm hearing from the councils, we are entertaining the thought just to move forward and, uh, drop the sales tax assumption by a half percent and to ask, um, staff to come back with some numbers to see what that might look like, just dropping that. Now, I wasn't quite certain. Were you?
Are you making a motion?
Well, I, I was checking with, um, Councilmember Resner. Were you wanting to make that assumption drop for one year, two years? Or, what, just one year? Okay. So, um.
So, you guys are going to, you're good with having your revenues exceed your expenses in this budget?
Well, what I've learned from all the budget meetings, and maybe they can speak to this too, but they've made the comments many, many times over the past four and five years in budget meetings, is that our revenue has never exceeded our expenses. We've always backfilled that with grant money that comes in, uh, with ever opportunities. And I, I don't know if that's accurate or what you can speak to, but it, our revenue is, we've always backfilled it with grants, right? So.
Right, but it's still ninety-six and one eleven. It's not like it's-
I, i- if you go, if you go back far enough, there certainly is times from an actual standpoint where we had more revenues than expenses. That's part of how our cash reserve was growing.
What year was that?
Any year, probably from around twenty-seventeen to twenty-twenty, at least. I, I'd have to go work those numbers.
Mr. Tippin?
You're saying no, but we did grow the reserve and it wasn't-
So, a couple of points of fact. One is that this budget before you does cut twenty-seven FTS. Just, just-
Twenty-seven what?
Full-time employees. And then the, the comment relative to revenues and expenses in normal budget times, right? When we're not dealing with this sort of, uh, deficit. If we were to show up in a budget meeting like this and we had two million dollars, quite frankly, the council would say, let's go spend it. So, so by the nature of what you said, council members wouldn't really allow that because they wanna provide the services. And so, you normally on a year-to-year basis wouldn't be budgeting surpluses. Because we're in the state that we are in, we're trying to bu- budget in those surpluses. So, this is more unique, as you point out, than normal. Um, because normally, council members would say, no, we wanna spend that money because that's ongoing and we wanna provide the services to the community.
Councilmember Danuka.
So, uh, can I ask you, what was the total revenue twenty-twenty-two to twenty-three? Do you have that number?
You have to look. He doesn't. Although, while you're saying it-
While you're looking, can I?
It's okay. Yeah, I mean, it, it really probably doesn't matter so much anyway. Because clearly, if we went into reserve and we just increase our reserve in the last decade, that means at some point of time, we were in the surplus. But Tennesse's point is very valid, that we have to be very cautious, that we do not exceed our expenses more than the revenue. And again, I would say that, that of course, this is a very difficult decision-making for any one of us. How much do you cut and how do you increase? So, again, I'll come back to the same thing. We need to look at more important issues to look at it. How do we increase the city's wealth in general and revenue in general? The question Tennesse, I have for you is, if we wanna go from hundred seven million dollar expenses to ninety-seven million.
Say that again? Go from one oh seven?
Hundred seven million to ninety-seven million, which was the last year's collection, where do you propose the expenses should be cut? Because just keep in mind, most of that, around seventy-five percent or so is police and fire.
Yeah, understand. So, the revenue was ninety-six point six million? Yeah, the revenue was ninety-six. And the expenditures were a hundred and eleven million last year, yeah. And then, um, and, and that put us at five million in the hole. So, I, 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 so, I, what I'm supposing is that it would be great if we actually workshopped and figured out like, where is everything at? Can we, even if we didn't change any of the, um, agreements, what if we just ended them at eighteen months and not? If it was a three-year agreement, maybe we make them shorter. We ask them to make them shorter so that we could renegotiate in eighteen months because we're not really sure how we're gonna be and we can't make that work into the tenure. I mean, I think that there's ways to be creative to figure out how we stop spending money for a little bit while we are trying to work out getting our reserves back up, getting, figuring out what's gonna happen with revenue if we don't really know what's going to happen. But I think the idea that I'm, I, I, I cannot justify passing a budget that I know feels incredibly unrealistic, especially since it's very similar to what we just did. And we had more money with the grants or ARPAs or whatever it was, or reserves or whatever it is that we spent. And, um, and I do understand we're making cuts. But I think we haven't workshopped enough of what other things we can do. We've really stayed away from our largest expense, which is personnel. It is our largest expense. And it's gone up quite a bit. It's gone up millions and millions of dollars. So, that's our largest expense. I don't, I don't know what the answer is.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
But I, but we haven't, we canceled our April workshop.
No, I understand that, but if you reduce your expenses by ten million dollar, we need to give some direction to the staff that, okay, come up with this plan that you're gonna cut ten million dollar.
Yeah.
Where? So, I need to, what I'm trying to find out is, where do you think that we can get this ten million dollar cut?
So, I don't think it's ten million dollars. I think it's making our revenues more realistic. And then, if, if revenues are, we think are gonna be a hundred and two million or a hundred, whatever, whatever they, I mean, it wasn't a hundred and five either. It was ninety-six point six. But I, but again, you're telling me this is the cash basis. So, I don't know that that includes everything, um, but-
Even if it is hundred two million, you still need to cut from hundred seven to, a hundred two is five million cut. Where will we make enough cuts?
Well, just remember that they did this in twenty-nineteen as well. They had a nine million dollar shortfall, which is even less than this. And they were trying to figure out, how do they actually get that budget down over the long term so that it worked within the ten-year plan? And they were only trying to get five percent in reserves. So, understand that this does happen. It happens, it's happening in Sacramento. It's happening in LA. It's happening everywhere. Everybody's budget are tight. COVID money came in. They made a bunch of, they, everybody thought, you know, COVID, again, they held the money. Everybody got a big jump in twenty-one. If people made assumptions based on that, they're fixing it now. So, it's happening all over the place. So, I know that there's mechanisms. I know there's things that you can do. I'm just saying, we really haven't dug into the harder things. We've attrited people because that's easier. We have cut O and M, which is great. We should cut O and M. That's totally understandable. But if we're gonna decide we're gonna stop providing services, let's make that decision that we know that the parks are, we're not gonna water the parks. We're gonna pick four parks and we're not gonna water them and the public's gonna know we picked those four parks. It sucks. It's terrible, but we're saving two hundred thousand dollars.
I understand. I'm just trying to get the real sense here that, okay, we have to cut five million or ten million. Can you give me some idea, where will you wanna cut it?
We're gonna move on for a minute. We're gonna move on. Hold on. Mr. Curtis, your turn.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm sorry, I don't mean to be interrupting what's a very important conversation. And I'm gonna be a little bit careful here because I am not an accountant and I don't work in finance. But after fifteen years of having sat with boards and councils, uh, about this, I've, I picked up on a few things that can be a little bit, um, risky. And so, I just wanna highlight a point that Mr. Robinette made before, which is, when it comes to looking at the budget, some of the mechanisms that I think that board members and council members instinctively wanna look at in terms of what your metric is can be misleading, in particular as to your total expenses, um, and, and your total revenue. Um, and that has a lot to do with how much ends up being funded through, um, uh, grant programs, et cetera. And I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Tippin and Mr., uh, Robinette, uh, on this. But the, um, the important thing is making sure that you identify the correct me- uh, metrics that, that track to what it is that you're, um, able to control in terms of your actual spending. Um, because a lot of the grant stuff may end up being, that your spending fluctuates relative to what you, you bring in in the income. Whereas what you control in terms of the positions is gonna track more closely to your tax revenue and your revenue from the similar sources. So, I've never heard a good metric articulated that really captures all of that effectively. Um, but I just wanna highlight that as I'm, you're in the discussion going.
Thank you. Mr. Tippin?
I just wanted to point out that as you're having this discussion, uh, remember that with police and fire, in particular, we have zipper-clawed contracts. So, we don't have a mechanism just to reduce without their full agreement. Um, and so, the, the first element would, would likely be layoffs in those areas. So, just, just so you know that, um, they, they, um, very much can come to the table at their desire. Um, we don't have the ability to modify those contractual salaries and hourly wages, um, unilaterally.
Aaron Resner?
I'm gonna make a suggestion. What if, um, for the next two years in our sales tax and revenue assumptions, we lo- excuse me, sorry, lower it to the two percent that Mr. Danuka, I think Councilmember Danuka suggested during our last, um, workshop. And maybe during an item twelve, Councilmember Adet could bring forward any sort of things that you would like changed in terms of what it is that we're being presented.
You making a motion?
That is my, the first part is my motion. The second part was just my unsolicited advice.
I'll second that motion.
So, the, you're, you just wanna, your motion is to change the sales?
It seems like the one, if, if we're looking through all of the assumptions that we have, it feels like the one assumption that I feel like we should be more conservative and it, uh, in our discretionary options.
And that half percent equates to what again?
He said a hundred and fifty thousand. Because I think that what we then need to do is that roughly, and if Q-two closes in six weeks, uh, eight weeks or so, then I would like to know roughly where it is that we are at. And if you're still seeing those numbers continue to decrease, um, then we know that we need to be even more conservative and potentially start discussing layoffs. That's my.
Uh, my second? All in favor? Are we voting?
I say aye.
Aye.
Because we also are supposed to vote.
All right. So, for now, it passes four to one? And we'll bring back the adjusted half of percent.
I'm sorry, uh, let me just clarify this. I'm clear here. Your proposal was to reduce it by one percent. Was it the?
Half of a percent.
Not half a percent, but was it to pass the preliminary budget? Oh, okay. That was not stated.
Now, what I heard, i- if I, if I, what I, what I heard was half percent per year on the revenue. We will bring back what, one percent first year and half percent going forward?
No, I would like to put it to two percent for the next two years.
Oh, cool.
Two percent, two percent. And we'll bring back the ramifications of that. And if there's additional reductions, we will identify what additional reductions that might need. What we'll attempt to do is also have the tenure plan flushed out. So, you'll have that and we'll bring that back on the twentieth.
Yeah, but just to clarify this is-
Well, we have to.
But this is not the, this is not the, uh,
The final budget.
Not the, not even, even the preliminary budget. It's not even the preliminary budget, just to warn us.
Yes, it is the preliminary budget.
No, no, I, I just, one second. I know preliminary budget is being presented. But what she's saying is that you bring it back-
Yes.
After saying that.
Oh, May twentieth.
Exactly.
May twentieth, okay.
Exactly. So, just for-
That's my, I just didn't understand.
May twentieth. So, we'll run those revenues through. We'll see what, where it puts us. And then if, we'll try to find additional reductions, um, and we'll bring those forward. And then you can have that. You can change the, uh, reductions. You can make whatever decisions you wanna make at that time. But we'll also try to work out the tenure plan by then.
But just for the records, it's not an approval of the preliminary budget right now.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. We're moving on. Moving on to Public Works. Mr. Webb. Negotiation Reading Airport runway.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. Um, this evening, I am recommending award of bid negotiation fifty-four fifty-one. This is the Reading Regional Airport, or RDD for short. Um, we're talking about a rehabilitation project of the existing runways, taxiways, um, high-intensity lighting, the Magvar and a number of other associated improvements out at the airport. Um, these are much needed, needed improvements, excuse me, that have been on the books for a number of years now. Um, Assistant City Manager Steve Bade and his team have been working with the FAA. Um, unfortunately, due to an administrative error a few years back, the project was delayed. Um, and we are recommending award today to our contractor, um, RAC, for both the base bid, um, as well as the bid alternative. Um, there are a number of other, uh, recommendations there. I'm happy to read each of them to you if you like. Um, answer any questions that you may have, um, regarding this topic.
One thing, Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
The administrative error was FAA's, not the city's.
Thank you.
Just wanna make sure that's fair.
Good to clarify that.
I would just, I don't have any questions. I wanna say thank you. My question was going to be, was that our error? So, thank you, um, for clarifying that. And, um, I will make a motion to approve, um, as recommended by staff and listed items one through six.
I'll, I'll second that motion. Uh, just to comment, I think one thing we've seen in staff reports and heard, of course, is we're voting on this anticipating the FAA is gonna award the money in July. But some comments I've heard is, we're very optimistic it's gonna happen because we're the number one priority in the entire Western United States, if that's correct. So, th- they say that with optimism, that this is likely gonna happen, but it could cost the city some money if we don't get the funding in July, but we're correct.
You are correct and thank you for asking. Yes, we're very optimistic that we will ultimately receive the grant we need to complete the funding portfolio for this project. Um, however, we do need to award this project right now to give our contractor adequate time to order the long-lead specialized equipment, as well as make arrangements with the airlines to make sure that the, um, airport is completely shut down for the one-month period where the contractor will be doing extensive work out there. We do have enough secured funding to, um, compensate the contractor for ordering the long lead of, um, electrical equipment and other associated items of work. And in the very unlikely chance that the city does not receive the remaining, uh, grant balance to fund the project, um, we would then have to cancel the contract and square up with the contractor, for lack of a better term. And there is a small chance that some of the, the monies owed to the contractor may be deemed um, not reimbursable by the FAA. And we won't know that until, um, that happens. Hopefully, it does not. Like I explained, we're highly confident that we will receive the grant. So.
Okay.
And that answers your question.
Yeah, and the second question I had, um, the runway will be shut down for approximately a month. Does this have any impact to our revenue, a guarantee for the new flight for Denver? Do we, do we know that answer or?
In, in terms of the minimum revenue, revenue guarantee?
Yeah, I mean, there won't be flights, so there's not empty seats. So, there shouldn't be an impact to that. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, that month obviously will be zero.
Yeah.
And it remains to be seen whether they will try to use some of that money at that, that month or not. That remains to be seen, frankly.
Can you tell us what the financial risk is if we approve this and we don't get the grant?
Um, we've looked through, excuse me, we've looked through the, the bid estimate. And depending on specifically what items the contractor does complete, um, prior to the city not receiving the, the full grant, it could be in the neighborhood of two million dollars.
Do we have any, can we use any of the grant to pay for any of costs if, if that does happen?
We have approximately three point six million dollars currently right now. Um, but what I'm sharing with you is that we're confident that a high amount of the two million dollars would be reimbursable. There is a chance that some of it would not be. And I, I cannot make that exact determination until, I don't wanna say until, in the event that that occurs.
Okay, but we're aware of what our risks are and we've calculated that and we have a plan.
We are fully aware.
We're really optimistic.
Kind of like our budget.
We're optimistic.
We've been on many, um, phone calls with FAA- We've been on many phone calls with FAA staff. They are very aware of the situation that the airport has been put in due to their administrative error. And they are working exclusively and very, very quickly to make sure that we we get the funding.
And more importantly, which month will it be closed?
September 23rd till roughly October 23rd, 28 days in there. And I would also remind council that these are critical repairs that really we are on the hook to make as, you know, the the operator of the airport. We we need to make these improvements, so.
Thanks.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Geez, show up.
On that one, thank you, Mr. Webb.
Thank you.
I did, I forgot that I was going to need to give you a full travel report. Where's Mr. Zettel? Mr. Zettel, do you want to talk about all of the fun topics that we got to talk about in DC with the NCPA? As the RU liaison, I also am a commissioner for the NCPA. Twice a year, they travel to DC to lobby on behalf of publicly owned utilities. Maybe just three topics that were.
So thank you, Councilmember Resner and Commissioner Resner with the Northern California Power Agency. As as you mentioned, yes, we traveled back to Washington DC. It was a perfect time to be back. At the Capitol. This week, there are several House committee meetings, talking about things like renewable energy tax credits that may or may not be surviving through the future, talking about things like where are they going to spend money on hydropower projects or environmental initiatives? Tax exempt bonds for municipals may or may not be on the chopping block. So there's some critical items in Congress right now that we were addressing, meeting with senators, Senate staff, congressional staff, and and member representatives of the House. We also met with the agencies. So Department of Interior, we met to talk about what's happening with the Central Valley Project, which is where we get the majority of, if not all of our federal hydropower law amendment. We met with Department of Energy to talk about where things are headed with grid deployment and grid security. I met with United States Forest Service to talk about wildfire mitigation, rights away, and what's coming up in the fixed for Forest Act bill. But overall, it was a, I found it very valuable, number one, to get our message across. In a, in a very un, a new time, I would, I won't say unstable, but it's uncertain. There's a lot of new folks at the wheel. And so if you're not there, then you're not present and your message doesn't really exist. Because I will say, what I noticed in DC is everybody else is there. So anybody who has an issue, they were there, they were present. And yeah, I think we we had some great meetings. We also were there with the Northwest Public Power Association teamed up, which Reading is also a member, which is good to have a strong delegation in the Pacific Northwest with a lot of, a lot of represent, representation across the state. So I was very pleased to go. And I think Councilmember Resner was instrumental in with other electeds from Northern California Power Agency in getting into certain offices. And if we don't bring our elected officials, then we don't get to meet with with the representatives from in the House and in the Senate, so.
Yeah, definitely felt like a good time to be there, especially while they're considering what should be on the menu for us to say, not us, and for us also to be able to talk, especially about fire mitigation and, you know, energy dominance is lots of language that's thrown around currently. And so I felt like it was good for us to be able to be there and talk about all of the options we have at RU. Anyway, that's it.
potential topics for future city council meetings.
All right. So with this, there's a community driven sales tax initiative that's in the works. There's an allocation of funds that would go toward to the Sheriff's Department to help fund an alternative custody program. And my request is to see is if we may be able to direct city staff, assuming they get enough signatures, that we would then direct staff to go start working on an LOI with the Sheriff's Department to get ahead of that, because it'll take months to get done. So if they get enough signatures, they would just direct staff to go start working on that, because if it passes in the future, say November, we would be ready to go and we would just be forward thinking on that. And that'd be my request. So if there's some consensus to work on an LOI.
So that that's an item for further discussion about directing staff to develop an LOI?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, does that put us in the position of being participants in the?
No, I, the, that doesn't get to the the realm of using any political resources or any public resources for political purposes. This would just be essentially negotiating your portion of the obligations in advance. And you're still going to have a role. If it collects enough signatures, you're still going to have that come in front of you for you to then take action and to send it to election.
Mr. Tippin, is this the time to do that or is there?
Yeah, what I would suggest, if if the council's interested, when that comes back to you to set an election, we would also tee up that topic, whether or not you wanted to start initiating discussions with the county.
Thought we already did that.
If they get enough signatures, that's all I'm saying.
I thought we already, I thought we were already moving in that direction.
That's a different.
That's a land, that's a land transaction as opposed to the tax transaction.
Gotcha.
Everybody's on board with that?
Yes.
I don't know what it is. What is the LOI for? I thought you were talking about the land thing.
If I, if I could, so part of the proposed taxation is 12% of the funding going to the county for purposes of alternative custody. That can't happen unless there's an agreement between the two agencies. So I think what's being suggested is that when that comes back for signature certification and establishment of an election, that we would also tee up an item as to whether or not you wanted to engage in a letter of intent with the county.
That's not something you'll be doing now, it'll be something you'll be doing later.
It would be only if they get signatures.
Okay. Oh, yeah, okay, I'm in.
I think I have two, do I have three? Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, anybody else?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't see, sorry. Councilmember Adet?
Thanks so much. So I never thought I'd be so fully acquainted with the 10-year plan, but we've violated our own policies by not having a plan when we dipped below our 10%. And we've done it twice. We did it in February as a whole for the 10-year, and we did it in September of '24 as a, as our own, in our own biennial. And so I don't know what council policies are for, if we're not actually really following them. But I would like to suggest that we have a budget workshop and we talk about policies to not get into the situation again, because we have spent, the estimate between ARPA funds and our reserves somewhere between 20 and 25 million dollars in the last three years. And not everybody was aware of that. I know I was not aware of that, how much actual money we were pumping through these with this budget. And so I would like to look at some council policies. I would like to look at what is possible, what are the ideas for ways that we can rein in our budget? What's realistic? What is unrealistic? What should require a sales tax? What won't? You know, like, what's the maximum by which we really have a handle on what we can do and not do, especially since inflation has, and COVID has sort of just changed the world? So I know we're one of the only cities that don't have a sales tax. I have thought about, you know, what if we did a, like a Parks, Chico has it, where they do a Parks District, you know? I think having a workshop to talk about never getting into this position again and what policies we have, maybe some policies we should set. Should we have a one-year budget? Should we, you know, just to really think about, like, we should be thinking how to never get to this place, because I don't want to cut cops, I don't want to cut fire. That's the most important thing that we offer in government. But I also don't have a full handle on exactly everything that's going into what's making this work and where that deficit is every single time. And so is it going to be that we do a Parks District and that really shores up that we're not going too far on one side? Or is it only one-year agreement? Like, what is it? What what what's going to make us a, an educated group that does a good job and then can continue to help the next council do a good job? So if you're interested, I would like to, I think we should set up a workshop.
One of those things, didn't, didn't every time we went under the 10%, we were all aware and we all voted on it?
I was not, I was not aware that we were under the 10%. I was aware that.
How can you not be aware? You told us.
I remember the one time we talked about the 10, well, because there's no plan either. So talked about it, but it was something that we were going to address at the biannual. Most of the reports just say we're going to address it at the biannual. I didn't even know about the policy.
I'm pretty sure they told us.
No, you need to watch the budget.
I've watched all the budget meetings. And this, and I read the staff. And I've read the staff reports. So I'll read the policy to you.
That's all right, I'm, I'm a no.
I'll, I'll read the policy to you. A requested appropriation that would cause the estimated end of your cash reserve in any year of the long range plan to dip below 10% needs to be submitted with a plan.
I'm sorry, we might be getting in a little bit more discussion about the substance. What I would suggest is, do you want to have the conversation about, do you want to have a workshop? And do you want to look at possible, I think I'm hearing, policies? Or other practices that you might adopt that might address this in the future?
I don't.
Danuka did not get to. No, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I'm really trying to understand that. I mean, the budget is very clear. It has been transparent. When I was running the campaign, I went through the budget of whatever cities. I mean, I understand where the money is coming, where the is going. I understand what the actual audited results are. Those are very clear to us. I mean, those are available anytime, and I'm sure the city staff will be happy to show it to any one of us. So I, I, I'm not sure I, I'm, I'm just to understand that you're trying to get a handle on where the money is coming and going, or you're trying to figure out how to make tough decision? What exactly are you asking for? That's what I'm trying to understand.
I think we should have a budget workshop.
No, no, that's, that's, we have had budget workshop, and I'm fine with that. But what I'm trying to understand is the goal of it. The goal of it is to understand the budget, that we do understand very clearly. I'm not sure I have many questions about that.
So our budget.
So there's two parts.
Yeah.
So one part is trying to understand the budget and expenses revenue.
So for me.
Let me just clarify this. Are you asking for that or are you asking the workshop to figure out how to make tough decisions?
No, neither. So I, I think that, one, I, we have, we have not done our council policy. So I think reviewing what those council policies are and talking about how to avoid not having the reports, what reports do we want to make sure that we have in our staff report that are printed every single time to make sure that we understand the ramifications? I mean, the policy says you have to have a plan to fix that 10-year gap. And we pushed it off instead of actually creating a plan. We did one in May, but it actually calls for it in February. And I did not know the difference, having been on the council for a short time, and we had just passed that. So I, I, there's a policy there for a reason, obviously, because that happens. And so not having the budget reports, which I've asked for many, many times, the budget is very clear. So are, so is the audit, which is great. But I, we just got the audit in March. So what I would, what I'm asking for is a budget workshop, not to understand the budget. The budget is very clear. I just, I don't even know what the actuals are for 2024. I haven't received them. I'd like to receive them.
I would need to move on.
I'd like to get those. So I would like a workshop to talk about if we are going to lower the revenue, like the expenses, that we talk about some of what those options would be. What are some of the things that we get? And we can bring back some of our own ideas of what we could do to actually drive down some of these expenses and have not a structural deficit.
All right, Mike?
No, I don't think we need to bring that back for this meeting. September in budget meeting, it was clearly said that in the future, the reserve is going to dip below the 10%. And watching those budget meetings, they clearly said, we're going to address this in the future. And that was their way of combating it, say, they will prepare, they will make adjustments, then they'll bring it back. So I don't necessarily would affirm with you that we broke council policy. I think they were working towards that really clearly from the September budget meeting. And they said, we're going to address in the future. So it was not an intentional decision where the council said, we're just going to break our own policy and look the other direction. We don't need to bring it back.
So one of the things that September.
I think I'm not sure what she wants to bring back.
That's what I'm trying to understand also.
So the budget workshop.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Are you, because we have a budget workshop in which that we, in which staff says, these are all of the things, and these are all of the, would you like to cut this? 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 A or B? And we pull all of these levers. Are you asking for another one of those? Or are you saying, I would like to review what our current financial council policies are, because I think what we have could be better? If you're willing, if you're saying, I want to review, I would like staff to come back to us with some new policies or to review some policies or to teach council members about the budget? I'm going to engage in that sort of thing, because I think that we can always be better.
So I definitely think parts of that, what you're saying, because I do think that we did not meet the policy. And I think that I'm not going fully into all of it right now, but I do, and I don't want to fully go into any, I want to not, so we did not get end of year numbers in in our normal September mid-year review. We did not get all of that information. So, so we were sort of, yes, we've got a problem, but there isn't, but I don't have like actuals. So that, that, that's, that's an issue. I want to solve that with a policy. And I think if we have a budget workshop to talk about how we could actually lower these expenses and what those options are to lower expenses, one of the things that.
Can you tell us exactly what you want so we can vote on it? I mean, you, it seems to me, to me that you're going around in circles.
I want to have a budget workshop to talk about further reducing expenses. I don't know exactly what we should, what we should be cutting, so I'd like.
So we already have to do that on the 20th?
At the council meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Because, because we've tried to get a special workshop, but nobody's available. So we're going to have to do it on the 20th.
That's what already agreed to, that they will reduce the revenue projection and on 20th, they'll present further options to see if further cuts can be made. They're already bringing that on 20th.
Are we going to? If there are other.
Bring them back if after that meeting, if there are other things that come up that are relating to the thing I said in regards to policy or improvements.
Yeah. Yeah, I can refine that.
Or what have you, then I'm totally willing to.
Can we get those reports?
What reports are you talking about?
The summary of general fund revenues and expenditures, the actual revenues compared to cash flow estimates, the comparative summary of actual revenue, the actual expenditures compared to cash flow estimates, and the actual expenditures compared to budget. It's, they're, they're what we used to get in all of our quarterlies and.
And like we said, it's a whole new system. And.
Sure.
My, so. Yeah, and also, we're still trying to finish the budget, and we still have the enterprise funds, and so.
Can we just have the actual expenditures compared to budget for 2024? That one, just the one sheet?
Yes.
Okay.
You want it on a cash basis or on a flow basis? It feels like.
It's a, it's the same report that we would normally get. You, you know what I'm talking about, right?
I think so.
It's this page. It's just one report.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I mean, if you can even email it to us.
So, so just to be clear, I think I'm hearing the item for the 20th is what was previously directed, it's going to allow opportunity to discuss this year's budget. In terms of the policies, that would potentially be a second item, but that's not being asked to be brought back at this time.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Good journey. Thank you.
Happy anniversary, Mike.